Good evening.
Yeah.
Good evening. Today is March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is six thirty P. M. I will now call the regular meeting of the District One ninety-one Board of Education to order. And happy Pi.
Yay.
Um, let's see. Director Werb, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb, seconded?
Second.
By Director Chester. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, well, we're going to begin with the information part of our meeting tonight. We'll start off this evening's meeting with a report about Eagle Ridge and Nicollet Middle Schools presented by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Chris Belmont, Principals Dave Helke and Carolyn Alston Trentian, and Associate Principal Jay Lepper, and Teachers Shelley McHugh and Jessica Thomas. Welcome.
Thank you Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. We have our middles here today. The, I have not, middle level is the only school level that I have yet to work in, in my career, but just in these last two years, I've come to understand that they really are the heartbeat of our school district and so important to what we're trying to do for our student experience in One ninety-one. So I'm glad you get to hear from them today. Just to remind the board that we are trying to center, we're really working to center our, our presentations and our school reports this year around the profile of a learner. Hopefully, you're hearing our core values, our strategic roadmap, and our profile showing up in the stories and the anecdotes that you hear from our leaders. So without further ado, Associate Principal Jay Lepper and Principal Dave Helke.
Good evening. Happy to be here tonight to share with you some of the exciting things that are going on at the middle level. Both Carolyn and I have been working hard this year just to, number one, learn a lot, but number two, make sure that we are creating a pretty unified approach and a vision at what we're doing in those precious grades of six through eight. So tonight, we're going to just kind of share a few things that are going on that I think will be reflective of our school communities and reflective of the, the values that we all, we all hold. And so, we're going to talk about really building culture because that's what the work is. Everything that we're doing at the middle school is building culture and, and building different cultures so that in the end, every one of our students is going to be a successful learner as they move forward. So the way we're doing that is focusing on really three, three big areas. One is honoring our learner's identity. The other is creating space for our learner's voice, and the other is continuously improving our practice. And so, as we go through and we're sharing some of this, just always frame it in, in the, in the, in the space of culture and really trying to put some things in place that become permanent and that are just part of what we do in the middle level here in One ninety-one.
And I just want to interject quick. Thank you, Mr. Helke. I forgot to explain to the board that Principal Alston Trentian is, is expectedly away this evening as she's out east, I believe successfully defending her dissertation. So she's, she was successful. The, so you'll see her coming in as video and her teammate, Mr. Lepper will help. So I'm going to step away as we have some guests too.
Yes, and I think, just to echo to what Mr. Helke said, another key piece at our middle school level is honoring our learner's identity. And so, three big pieces to that are ensuring students see themselves throughout the building, images, student work messages, and along with that, we see student work displayed not only in the classroom, but if you, the middle picture illustrates this, if you walk through the halls of our middle schools, you're going to see student work displayed all throughout the hallways of our building. And so, when students walk by or parents are in the building or families or community members, they're seeing all of this great creative work that our students have put out, and the students can see it in themselves, and it's changed all the time. So you're not seeing the same student work up in September and then seeing that same student work up in November. It's constantly changing as new work is completed by students. The other thing is that pictures in the classrooms represent our students as well, and authors, literature, articles, library books, representing all of our students in our buildings. The other thing is that creating spaces for teachers to reflect on their own identity and how that impacts the way that they show up and interact with students each day. And to that end, teachers are able to reflect on their own identity in staff meetings and in professional development sessions as well. And then the third bullet point emphasizing the importance of building relationships with students beyond the surface level. And I could go on and on about that with my own stories, but I brought a friend along with me, and she does a great job giving me critique and feedback on my socks, my different pattern of socks every day. But more importantly, she brings a smile and positive energy to our building, to our students and our staff. That's infectious every single day, and it's Shelley McHugh, one of our phenomenal special ed's teachers at Nicollet Middle School.
Well, I'd also like to comment that you can say good morning and hello to students in their native language, to multiple languages, just as that you've made that effort to greet each kid in their native language, and it's a lot of different languages.
Mahat sana. Gracias, thank you.
Good. What am I doing? Are we on slide four?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. One of the things that happens is that teachers have developed relationships with kids to the point where kids are lining up outside of their doors waiting to be able to talk to that teacher. They might not have that teacher for a class. They're coming to tell the teacher a story because they had that teacher before, or they never had that teacher, but they're wanting to get some feedback for them about something that they did or something that they heard about. The other thing about the relationship with students is that the lessons that they're teaching go a little bit deeper than what we might think that somebody should know. And by honoring a student's identity, we have an M.L. teacher that was trying to figure out what might be the best next lesson for these students who really didn't speak much English at all, and she chose teaching them how to call nine one one in their native language, excuse me, in English, even though the M.L. teacher wasn't fluent in the student's native language. And it was just a very interesting process where she was using pictures and diagrams and pointing at the phone and using her Google translator to try to get those words to translate the address and allowing those students the chance then to practice making the call. And this teacher, Amy Olson, had set it up with another teacher in the building to practice dialing that phone call, where then the student in English would have to say that it's an emergency, fire, and then state the address. And the thing that I love about a lesson like that is that's really about going home real world ready, that there's an emergency and those kids can leave with those sorts of skills. So it's those sorts of things of building a relationship beyond the surface level and giving them skills beyond just a textbook.
And even though she cannot be here with us tonight, we have a video now of Dr. Carolyn Alston.
One thing that we have really prioritized to focus on this year is really honoring the identity of the students that we serve. So one thing that you will see if you walk through the halls of Nicollet is student work all throughout our buildings. And that is something that we are really excited about because it's so important for our students to see themselves as brilliant sense makers, as well as the fact that teachers see them the same exact way. So every single classroom posts student work outside of their classroom walls and in the spaces to make sure that students are seen those ways. We also have prioritized professional development, learning opportunities for the teaching staff because it's so important for us all to be in touch with our own identities in order for us to better serve the students in the community that we serve. For example, we have had opportunities in our professional development sessions to really reflect on our external identities as well as our internal identities, so the identities that people can see and make assumptions about, as well as the identities that are internal that no one is aware of, and how that impacts how we show for our students, as well as our interactions with our students. And so, opportunities like that to reflect on our identity and to make sure that we are allowing students opportunities to show off their identity in the spaces, throughout the walls in the school, as well as in the classroom are things that we are really focusing in on to make sure that the experience is as positive as possible for all of our students in the community. In addition, to make sure that students feel ownership while in the community because it is their school, we are here for them and we are serving them. So those are things that we are really proud of at Nicollet to make sure that we are uplifting identities of all of our students and even providing opportunities in the classroom for students to make connections to their personal lives so that they are excited about the work and excited about what is happening in the classroom and feel like they have meaningful information to contribute.
So much of the core of the identity work is just, you know, creating that space and creating that culture where we really are, we're about kids being humans.
One thing that we have.
And, and oftentimes, I know both of us, we spend a lot of time in our professional development and in our interactions with teachers.
We've just been to this challenge.
This happens, this happens to me every time I use the me line at PD and I try to stop the video.
One thing that we have really prioritized to focus on this year is really honoring the identity of the students that we serve.
This happens to me every time I don't lean on Aaron to be in charge of it.
There we go. So, so it's really creating that, like I said, that, that space for just looking at students as, as humans and, and really, really working with all the adult staff in the building and, and seeing them beyond just maybe the, the behavior or what the data says. And I, I have to say, and I know talking with Carolyn, we both, we absolutely love our kids, and I've learned so much from them at the middle level. And, and so, we want to keep up that work. A couple other examples of identity truly, it was just so refreshing for me having a conversation with our media specialist and when we were talking about the resources and kind of decisions that, that he was making, that he was, the first thing he was bringing up was really trying to look for and going out there and trying to find books and resources that are representative of, of our students. I also know that we're both kind of at the beginning of work of really trying to tap into the high school and, and create affinity group spaces at the middle schools and, and really looking at how can we bring a high school students down that are leaders in those spaces to, to work with our students. And then when, you know, we talk a lot about restorative practices, we talk a lot about non-exclusionary discipline, that's all about identity too, because again, it's really giving students that space and that chance to talk about who they are and, and really respecting who they are, not just what, what we see at that tip of that iceberg, but really what is truly going on. The next part though is voice, which, which is an extension of identity. And, and again, that can come through affinity group work at the schools, it can come through providing choice. When you look at the work that's oftentimes posted or you're just in classrooms, seeing teachers provide kids open opportunities of what they might want to write, write about or what they might want to share. It also comes in when you see examples of students that are explaining how they may solve a problem. I was in a math class and it was, it was incredible to see groups of kids at different whiteboards doing a problem. They all did it a little differently, but for the kids to be able to share how they did it, that, that's really what voice is, is honoring how they're thinking and honoring how they're approaching something. And so, we're going to introduce another video, and I'll let Jay handle the, the technology.
Another thing that we are really proud of in our work this year at Nicollet is our intentionality around creating spaces for the voices of our stakeholders. And so, what that looks like is we are really intentional about making sure that there are feedback avenues within the community. For example, after professional development sessions, all teachers are able to provide feedback in the form of a survey to name whether or not this session met their needs. And that also is used to inform future planning of sessions to make sure that they are getting what they need to meet the needs of our learners. We have also prioritized in our professional development the need for teachers to incorporate opportunities for student-to-student discourse in their instruction. The idea behind this is to make sure that we are giving students the space to engage in these academic conversations, but also, as previously noted, make connections to their personal lives so they are able to bring in that knowledge base and share that with others in their classrooms so everyone is able to learn from them in their own personal experiences and make that connection back to the curriculum. We've also created spaces for students to be acknowledged for their great efforts and the progress that they're making aligned to our core values, where teachers are able to nominate students for the great work that they're doing, and then we're able to uplift those voices of our teachers at our town hall celebrations that take place monthly so that students can be acknowledged for their great work and their efforts. This is so important because we want to make sure that everyone is being seen for the great work that they're doing. It's also important because we want to make sure that teachers are involved in making sure that we are uplifting our students across the board in our community. So another thing that we're really proud of in Nicollet is how we focused in on creating spaces for our stakeholder voices. Now, this is something that we are continuing to work on, however, the things that we were able to get in place so far this year include creating spaces for teachers to give each other feedback in the form of shout-outs. So weekly on the staff update, teachers are able to submit shout-outs to their colleagues, and those are posted publicly for the whole community to see. And these examples just add on to the cultural feedback that we are working to establish in the community and really helps with shifting to a really positive climate community-wide. So these are examples that we are really proud of as far as creating those spaces for stakeholder voices. So we will continue working really hard to be intentional about ensuring that there are spaces for feedback to be provided from teachers, from students, from families, so that we can make sure that all needs are being met for the purpose of serving the students that we care so much about and whose brilliance shines through and who we want to support with continuing to uphold the outcome of the profile of the learner in ISD One ninety-one.
And one thing I'd extend on that is just so much work around strength-based and asset-based approaches. You know, making sure that we're celebrating student strengths, making sure that we're recognizing student strengths, and, and really making sure that, you know, while we're working with students, because we all know we have areas where we need to grow, we need to learn, and, and some of us aren't as good in as others, not just focusing in on those, but getting our students more comfortable with identifying their own strengths, because that, that is something when you work with, especially with middle school children, oftentimes, it's really easy for them to talk to you about things that they might need to do better on, but when you ask them to think about what their strengths are, it, it's a little bit more of a difficult task. And so, just infusing that in everything we do so that students know that we're about really looking at who you are and your strengths and, and focusing on your assets in, in all of our interactions and conversations. And so, the last area really is continuous improvement, and that really talks about being intentional with what we are doing in the classrooms and, and the instruction that's occurring. It also talks about striving to be excellent. You'll see on the right, both of us had our staff look at a variety of statements that really reflect excellence and achievement, and surprisingly, we had both of our staff's vote on which one they thought would be the one that we could work off of, and both of our staffs picked the same one. So you'll see that top one up there was, was the one that was chosen. We had a tie at Eagle Ridge, so there's also one on there that was also up there. But that really drives all of our work, and I think most importantly for me, the work that we're doing is really about how do we, how do we support our students social emotionally? How do we at the middle school, across both middle schools, really work on our curriculum so that we can assure that we have a cohesive, aligned curriculum that has clear benchmarks and clear assessments so that our students are prepared when they go to the high school to access all of the pathway opportunities? And then how do we continue to work with our teachers in terms of always looking at, at the data, not just data from test scores, but the data they get from the work that, that students do? And, and I think in the spirit of continually improving practice, there's two things that, or two teachers, two experiences that I've recently had that just highlight for me the culture that we have in our district that allows teachers to, to be vulnerable and to grow. I had one teacher that was sharing at a meeting we were having about how they were so excited about doing Socratic seminars, and they've tried some, and that is something that, that particular teacher had never really done before. And I, that really did all come out of just the culture of when the staff comes together, professional development, the networking, the conversations that staff have with each other. And then the other one was a classroom I walked into, and again, you know, a teacher that was really hesitant about all the wicker, the avid wicker, the writing, the inquiry, the collaboration, but while within thirty minutes of being in that classroom, I, I was able to walk out and, and look at the teacher and say, I, I want to use you at a staff meeting or, or in my weekly Raptors notes, because I saw W., I saw I., I saw O. It was pretty incredible. And again, so much growth, and, and I think that's, that's what we're working to create amongst our staff as well.
I think, I believe we have another video with Carolyn.
The last thing that I would like to share in alignment with the work that we are currently doing at Nicollet, our efforts to continually improve our practice. And before I get into additional things that I would like to add to what I've previously shared, I do want to name that all the things that I've shared on before and the other two clips are all for the purpose of ensuring that we are continually improving our practice as a community and supporting the needs of our learners in doing so. One thing that we have done this year to ensure we are all in alignment in regards to what we are striving for in terms of progress for our students is, it was so important for us to identify what excellence is in our community. So what is our standard of excellence? What does excellence look like in our students, and what does excellence sound like in our students, and how do we know that our students are moving towards our definition of excellence? So what we have done is we reviewed Teresa Perry's Culture of Achievement indicators, and we voted on the one that we felt most closely represented what we want to strive for in the community of Nicollet to ensure our students are ready for the world out after Nicollet and are future-ready for the world beyond Burnsville High School. This Culture of Achievement Indicator can be viewed on this slide. And every single time we come together, meeting our professional developments and staff meetings, the community grounds ourselves in that Culture of Achievement Indicator. We are also placing emphasis on meeting the needs of all of our students and making sure that all of our students are able to engage in high-quality instructional experience through rigor and making sure that they have access to grade-level content and standards at all times. We've done some work with systems to ensure that we are able to identify students who may have additional needs, and we have worked with teachers, student support team, outside providers, and we make sure that every single party is able to share their input so that we can proactively meet the needs of our students and work towards a more proactive approach across the board. Teachers are given the space to also review assessment data, whether that means classroom level data specific to one lesson or assessment data that is provided to us by the state. This data is reviewed in order to determine which standards our students perform really well on, as well as standards that we might need to spend additional time on to ensure student mastery. This informs the planning that happens by teachers and the instruction that takes place in the classroom to make sure that we are on the path to continually improve. These are just a few more things that we are really proud of in the community and will continue to work at to make sure that our students are getting their needs met across the board, both academically, socially, emotionally, and we are able to support students who are building skills that may lead to various behaviors. We're so proud of the work happening in Nicollet and look forward to continuing on this path.
So I have Jessica Thomas, who is an avid elective teacher and an avid coordinator at Eagle Ridge. And the next three sides are just, highlight three kind of broad areas at the middle school that our work is focused around. That's also grounded in what we just talked about, but I, I think really avid pulls it all together in a lot of ways, so I'm going to let her share just a little information from that perspective.
Hi, good evening. It's nice to meet you. I'm, I'm going to talk about avid school-wide and how it works at Eagle Ridge, and I know it works really well at Nicollet too. But most schools for avid start with an avid elective, and then they branch out and avid becomes more part of the school. Eagle Ridge actually did it the opposite way when we started. We started more school-wide, and then we kind of focused in on the avid elective, which has made it really nice because avid and its framework is now really ingrained in Eagle Ridge and our culture and everything that we do is just how we do things. And with this avid framework, it really gives us that ability to focus on wicker, like Dave talked about, which is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And all of these are meant to do to learn. So we're having, we're having the focus this year at Eagle Ridge, really focusing on wicker and doing that to learn for our students. The idea is like you use all five of them together and you have like amazing things happening in your class, but actually individually, two of they work really well for students to give their choice and voice in the classrooms. So first example, writing. We have lots of writing going on in our classrooms, and it's amazing. We have, with the writing, they are connecting their thinking and their learning, they connect it to themselves, the lives, things around them, the other text, and basically, when they can connect, connect to the world around them, it's amazing because middle schoolers usually can't see a lot past outside the walls of Eagle Ridge or those couple of minutes that they're with you, so having them look big is, is wonderful and much. They do show it in various ways. We do take focus notes, they do their connections with that, they can do YouTube links, they draw pictures. We have interactive notebooks where they're responding and learning and responding at the same place. An example of writing and connection and voice, we are currently doing argumentative writing in sixth grade, and I gave them a top, I said, no, no topics, just pick what you want, have fun with it. Some kids didn't, dogs are better than cats, okay, that's great. One girl was really struggling, so I went over and I'm like, hey, how, how's it going? She's like, I don't have a topic, and it's okay, 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 so what do you like? Taylor Swift. All right, all right, we got Taylor Swiftie here, we got a little Swiftie. So I'm like, well, what do you think about Travis Kelsey? And she goes, I like him with her. And I was like, okay, well, do you think they should get married? Yes. That's your paper. Oh, I can do that? Yes. And she is like, nonstop, like very excited to do this paper and taking her notes because this is her world and that's what she loves. And so, we're just making sure that she's making, having her voice shown and making that connection. With reading and inquiry, they are reading more stories about themselves and stories that they like. Inquiry, I love it because we're teaching them how to ask questions and learn how to answer those questions, but actually asking questions of one another and being able to talk to one another and getting their voices heard in the classroom has been so amazing to hear their voices and hear how they connect and hear how they can ask a question, and they will often ask questions that I didn't even think to ask because, and they're amazing, I love it. And when you put all of these together, it's literally magic in a classroom when you have all of these things happening. For example, seventh graders last year was not an avid class, I'll let you know this right now, not an avid class, I had seventh graders. We would do, we did a reading, and we did the discussion, and you have the questions, and all of a sudden, they're like, kind of going off and they're kind of going back and forth about discussing what was going on, and they, honestly, they got heated. They got into it, they were just like, kind of going back and forth, and one student looks at me and she goes, can we do philosophical chairs right now? I was like, yeah, of course. They all jumped up, went on a agree, disagree on their own, and just started debating on their own. And by the end of the year, they were asking to pick their own articles so they could do philosophical chairs every week. And it's things like that that just make it, that make avid just part of our culture, and that, that's what they do. I will say too, my sixth graders this year, they have my heart, they cheer when we have to do tutorials. I'm going to let you know, it doesn't happen very often. So it's really amazing to like see them because they love collaborating and they love asking those questions, they like, they love being able to show what they know and getting answers and asking questions of each other. So this year's focus at Eagle Ridge has been Tier One and how avid works in with Tier One and how they all actually work together. Everything does work together and they all support each other. And we've been able to show how that And we've been able to show how that works and how that, and we've been able to show that because Eagle Ridge is actually really growing and improving. So the students have their voice, educators are providing, and in turn Eagle Ridge is a stronger community. And we're gonna hopefully prove that because on May sixteenth, we actually have been asked and are able to do an avid showcase. And this means we've been inviting a bunch of avid schools, whoever wants to come, and they get to come and see how we do avid at Eagle Ridge. We're gonna do tours and they talk to students. And it's actually really exciting because not every school gets asked to or gets to do this. And so I really feel like it's a testament to our commitment to students and making them future-ready.
Another big part of our work this year has been determining non-exclusionary practices. We all know the best place for students is in school and in classrooms. And to that end, we've really started this work and I'm really excited for where we're going with this model, not just this year, but into next year. So on the left-hand side of the slide, you'll see the Eagle Ridge Middle School Behavior Flowchart. And this really does a nice job of giving teachers different strategies that they can utilize in the classroom and also illustrates the different resources that are available if that is handled in the office and the different people that are, that would be involved or could be involved in any type of situation. On the right-hand side is currently a tool, a toolbox of different strategies that can be used that we created at Nicolet Middle School for alternatives to suspension. And that's, that was just created this year, but just so you know, this is about wrapping around a student. It's once you determine their needs and then helping that student to grow, but it's continuous improvement. So to that end, it's analyzing, it's assessing, it's progress monitoring. This list is, is fluid. It's gonna be changing. It's gonna be improving. And the other thing that we're really excited about, and we discussed piloting this or rolling it out next year, but we said, no, why wait, is we're developing a RISE room. RISE is our PBIS acronym. It stands for Responsibility, Integrity, Safety, and Excellence. And I actually have my RISE shoes on tonight. The students absolutely love those. I wear them every Friday, but sometimes I wear them because they're so comfortable. But our RISE room is an example where we can leverage many more of our resources to assist students in need and then get them regulated and get them back in the classroom where they belong. And it's not just, it's not going to be just a place for a student to go, but we want it to be a place where a student can go and grow as a person and as a student. And so again, I'm very excited for that. We are actually gonna roll that out and pilot it fourth quarter this year. And then the other piece is our different systems of supports, interventions, and that's both academic and socially-emotional. You've already alluded to avid. Our tier, one of our tier ones is that we're an avid school-wide. So you're gonna go, any classroom that you go into, you'll see avid strategies being used. And the great part of that too is that when students go from classroom to classroom, these avid strategies are consistent and the same language is being spoken, the same strategy. So you talked about philosophical chairs. Those are used in every single classroom, that type of strategy. So if you're in an ELA classroom, social studies, science, math, PLTW, even in some of our elective classes, those types of strategies are being used everywhere in our school. And this also includes the socially-emotional SEL lesson groups, academic interventionists, partnerships between our home and our school because it really is a partnership between our school and our families in a shared vision and a goal for the student. And then we are able to see so many successes on, not just yearly, but every single day. And this also includes many of our new ML strategies that we have started to implement that benefit all students, like for example, highlighting essential vocabulary. Also, an AI tool that we started using this year called Diffit. And it really, it plays to the holistic student and wrapping around all students. And these strategies are fantastic because they are beneficial to every single student that we have.
Likewise with avid, if we're using a sentence, a sentence stem, it's gonna help all students be able to complete something. If we're doing a turn and talk, maybe I understand it a little bit, but Jessica really goes a little bit deeper by us being able to have that conversation, we can understand a strategy a little bit better. Jessica was talking about philosophical chairs. There are teachers that use it in math. Go ahead and work through that math problem. Let's talk about why this answer is right and why it's not. Tell me, tell me about your thinking. Let's see how we got there. There's a strategy about a three, two, one. There was a student that used it in Block One in their English class, lists the three favorite lines from a poem to then list out two elements of poetry that they found in that poem and one question you could ask the author. Walked across the hall to science and they had to list out three layers of the earth, list the two layers that are closest to the core and which one is the hottest. So it's getting them to break down to just some strategies where there's some simple things. Not necessarily writing a paragraph summary about what did we do today, but sometimes just breaking down into that simple language. Those good strategies help all learners. Some people wanna go deeper. There's usually an honors elective. People can go deeper. We have that option also. But we wanna make sure that everybody gets to be able to participate in that essential curriculum with visuals, by pausing, making sure that there's somebody that's able to see something, hear something, and be able to have that chance to learn at their level. Should I talk about the? Okay, good.
So I think the next slide is next steps. I, I think you'll recognize, there's lots of momentum at the middle level. Both, both of your principles at their core are about kids. I mean, we love kids. We share stories about the kiddos we work with. That's why we're there. And I think that it's been great this year just collaborating and we've kind of landed on we don't wanna start necessarily anything new next year. We feel like there's some great foundations and so we're really gonna focus a lot on curriculum, lesson and unit plan and design to bring our two middle schools into alignment and to create those kind of common assessments so that we can truly make sure that our kids are going up to the high school prepared as they needed to, continuing to maximize those systems of interventions and, and really building a lot more knowledge around using data and really finding ways to use that data to pinpoint those areas where we need to continuously improve. So just a big thank you to both teams at both schools. We got great people that are working with us. You know, you're, you're, it's luck, it's fortunate to work in a district with two middle schools, one that's an avid demonstration school and one that's been asked to do a showcase. And it's really all about Tier One. It's what we're doing for all kids. So thank you for the opportunity.
Excellent. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Jessica Thomas, do you remember me?
I sure do.
In your classroom as an avid tutor?
You're extraordinary, yes.
Some years again. That was some years ago. Well, anyway, thank you all for coming and, and presenting this. This is really good and I really enjoyed my time at avid. So this just explains to everyone how cool that program is. So thank you.
It's good to see you.
You too.
Oh, sure. No, thank you. My child is gonna be a future sixth grader at Nicolet. So, elated to hear how there's such a pairing. Like there's, like the same experience, the same goals that are gonna be at each of the middle schools for each, you know, for all of our students. I, I love the, the combined presentation that demonstrates that. And I know that you were talking a lot about preparing our, our middle schoolers for high school. I would love any sharing of preparing our elementary students to be joining the middle school. I know we had open nights recently, but it'd be, I know that there's a lot of work being done on that end too.
Do I have time to share just a couple highlights?
Highlights, yeah.
Sure. So in the fall, we had all of our fifth graders visit Nicolet Middle School and Eagle Ridge Middle School. And since then, we've had our counselors visit all of the elementary schools that feed, the five elementary schools that feed into Nicolet. And our deans, two deans are actually gonna go over and visit all five of the elementary schools as well. You just also alluded to the fact that we had Welcome to Nicolet Night for fifth graders and it was unbelievably well-attended. There were hundreds of people there. And it was just, I had so much energy. It, it basically energized me for about two weeks. But the other thing that we're doing, the last week of May, actually the week of the May twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, we are bringing each elementary back over to Nicolet Middle School to spend more time than we did in the fall with them. They're each gonna have about an hour segment and we're gonna divide them up across the five days so that we are bringing them over by classroom so that we, it's, it's more intimate in that regard. We're not bringing them over in larger groups like we did in the fall. It's gonna be smaller by classroom so that we have a chance for students to ask us questions and we'll have a student panel there also to help answer questions. They will get a guided tour and they'll also have a scavenger hunt about different aspects of Nicolet. And then we always leave them all with a parting gift from Nicolet Middle School as well. So those are just some, some of the highlights. I don't wanna, I know time is of the essence, but I just wanted to go over those highlights as well.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah. I also wanted to say thank you. I have a student exiting middle school and one entering. So, very excited about, you know, having a new one coming in. But just great to hear the thought and, you know, dedication that's put into our, our programs and the things that we put in place for our students in middle school. It's a very delicate age between elementary and high school. And I know we don't have enough time, but you know, I, I'd really be interested to hear more about some of the interventions that we do for middle school students and probably for another evening, just about, you know, you know, when we identify that students who are struggling with grades, you know, what kinds of things we do to, to help them, you know, get their, you know, grades back up. But I was also curious too, Davy, I know you mentioned something about trying to get affinity groups into middle schools as well and where, where is that at or is that something that's gonna be trying to be a focus now or?
I would say at the middle schools, we're at the beginning stages of that. I mean, I think we, we've done probably a little bit more this year just to pull, we've, we had some loose affinity groups already. I, I think the excitement though is really creating those groups and then actually connecting with the high school. And it provides in our high school kids an opportunity to lead. And it also allows them to really build up students that are gonna go into the high school, that can join the groups at the high school, kind of knowing already how to lead, how the groups work. And it, it's amazing to see the kids and how excited they are when they get to come together. I mean, I've, they pulled together a, they have a Latino group that they've worked with at Eagle Ridge. And I mean, the, it's, you realize the importance of identity when you give kids a chance to, to celebrate, to talk about, to honor, to be with people that they have a lot in common with. And, and we learned so much too. So, yeah.
Thank you all for coming and sharing. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So I appreciate, I think it's really important, you know, getting the students, right, coming between the schools, getting the elementary students to the middle school and the middle schoolers up to the high school. In terms of the behind-the-scenes alignment that's being done academically. Dave, you had mentioned, you know, pathways alignment, but not specifically to that. Can you speak to that in terms of how we're strengthening the alignment between middle school and, and high school?
Yeah, so it, it, I'll, and this is relatively new work. You know, it's come out of, like I said, a lot of collaboration between Carolyn and I. And we both realized that, starting with our middle schools, we need to make sure that we can get our middle schools on the same page and, and really start aligning that curriculum. So the work really starts and the focus of it, we introduced it just recently at our PD. And I think both of us are really thinking of making it a core of our SIP plans for next year and really shifting so that our collaborative teams can really spend their time on that work. And then, once we can get our units and lessons in place, the next phase of that would be then looking at fifth grade, looking at ninth grade and, and saying, okay, this is what we've been able to come up with based on the standards at the middle school. Now let's look at before and after and adjust as we need to, to make sure that A, we're not wasting time when students come into sixth grade going over things that have already been done. And then B, knowing that the level of rigor and, and mastery in eighth grade is at that point where all students can be successful at the high school. Cause I, I think being at both gives me a little bit of a different perspective. And when I came last year to Eagle Ridge, I, I really, I was trying myself to kind of define how pathways are operationalized at the middle school. And I think a big part of pathways at the middle school is connected straight to the profile of learner and it is about literacy. And I know that has been something that Dr. Battle has shared with us over the past couple of years because the reality is if we don't have our students at that level of mastery that they need to access the opportunities at the high school, many of them will not be able to tap into or get into all of those pathways. So, and that's driving the work too, you know. So I'm, I'm excited about it and, you know, I, I'm, I have to thank Carolyn because she has brought a lot of expertise from, from her role. And it has just been, it's been awesome working with her over the past, what, seven months? And I really think, you know, both of us being new, we've, we've kind of landed and got some direction that is gonna be exciting as we move forward.
And do you get a sense, and Jay, this is also a question for you too, is there a sense that part of that growth and continuous improvement might also be awareness among the middle school staff in terms of what the opportunities look like at the high school? Or is there, are, is middle school staff pretty solid in their understanding of what our students will be walking into when they get to the high school?
Yeah, absolutely. So our eighth graders have been to the high school and have had pathway tours at the high school so that they can see all of, and having worked at the high school for seven years, I have a very good knowledge of what our pathways look like. And I was just talking to one of our teachers that teaches in the Certified Nursing Assistant Program. So that reminded me that there's just, if you take advantage of all the different resources, checking out the pathways, it doesn't mean you commit to a pathway. You don't, you don't, it's not like committing to a major in college. It's trying things out and determining, is this, is this an area that I'm passionate about and that I really like? And if it is, I can hammer away at so many classes at Burnsville High School and those pathways. And if it's not, I was successful in determining that's not an area of interest for me and I don't wanna pursue that before I get to college or trade school or somewhere else in life and make a decision that wasn't suitable for me. So I think our teachers have done a great job because our partnership with our Burnsville High School and their link crew and their teachers has led our eighth grade teachers to be very knowledgeable about the high school, about the pathways and able to articulate that in their classes with their students. Our high school staff has done a great job of creating slide decks and presentations for our teachers to show. And that has not only educated our eighth graders, but our eighth grade teachers. And our eighth grade teachers find that a wonderful source of knowledge. They want to know what they need to do to prepare our eighth graders better for the high school. And so they are just soaking that information in like a sponge and using that to assist the eighth graders in this transition. I mean, we only have two and a half months left, but our eighth grade teachers are still talking. To this day, I had a conversation with one of our eighth grade teachers yesterday and she said, this two and a half months is an opportunity. We have two and a half months left. There's gonna be so much growth still for our eighth graders. And then this spring, it's our eighth graders going over to the high school again now. And it becomes a reality. Sorry, I'm speaking and going on and on, but I'm very passionate about it. And it also lies in the registration process. So in the registration process, again, that, that pathways piece and really knowing what classes are available has assisted our eighth graders in making more informed decisions into the classes that they sign up to take as ninth graders.
And there's been a lot of intentionality behind all of that, thanks to Dr. Belmont, who has brought us together and we've really, there's a plan now that we're really trying to create a system for the transition so that, you know, what we know works continues every year.
Awesome. Thank you both. That's really helpful.
Any comments? Well, thank you very much for the, your time tonight, the presentation. It's clear, your passion and dedication to these buildings and all the people, children and head employees inside. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will receive a report about our Early Childhood Screening Program from Jason Sellers, Director of Community Education. Cynthia From Jason Sellers, Director of Community Education, Cynthia Samper's, Early Learning Coordinator and Teacher, Daniel O'Brien. Welcome.
All right. Good evening. Uh, thank you Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, uh, members of the board. Really proud to be here tonight to talk about early childhood screening. Uh, to my right is Daniel O'Brien, who is an ECFE teacher and our lead screening coordinator. Uh, and of course, Early Learning Coordinator Cynthia Samper's. And without any further rhetoric, here we go.
We skipped ahead.
Skip ahead.
So, basics. Okay, we'll go, we'll switch. So, um, you can see on your screen that we start with a statute that comes from the state related to early childhood screening. It's mandated for all kids, as you can read there. Um, for our, from our perspective, we're really looking for the youngest possible because one of the things we're looking for is what kind of opportunities or resources can we help connect a family with? And so by initial connection through the screening process, um, we can connect. Um, it also can be bypassed, as you can see there, with special education. Um, if it's an assessment through them or they're receiving services or a conscientious objector form. We don't recommend those, but that is a way for a parent to not do it.
Uh, right, and here we can see that, um, you know, we just went through a pandemic, right? So during that time, we had to do screening differently. Um, what that looked like for most kids was a phone call from a screener. So it was a parent interview. Um, can your child do this? Can your child do this? Does your child do this? Um, sometimes it was a Zoom call where they could do it via video. And then if a family chose, they could come in. Um, but, uh, as I'm assure you all can imagine, that would be a much less thorough screening, um, process. So now that that is, um, over, we're back to the norms and mandates from the state. Uh, as, in addition to that, the state has opened up the age range of kids eligible for screening. So now it goes up to seven years old. The idea here is that we play catch-up and can kind of, uh, reach some of the kids that missed it during those pandemic years.
Go ahead.
This is you.
Yep. So the next two slides are related to funding. Uh, this slide indicates the level of reimbursement based upon the age of the child. Next slide. Uh, and in terms of screening aid, two changes first. There's a thirty percent increase from the state in funding, which still doesn't cover or even come close to covering the cost of screening in any school district. Uh, and second, that we also, post pandemic, still have to provide the opportunity for virtual screenings if that's what a parent chooses.
So here's what we have, here's what we know. In twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, when most of the screenings were virtual, we screened six hundred and eight students in ISD one ninety-one last year, uh, which is when I took over running the show. Uh, five hundred sixty-three students. Uh, this year already, we're up to five hundred and ninety-seven as of yesterday. Um, so we're doing very well. Um, that seven point two percent student population number. So I've been in contact with the other early childhood screening coordinators around us, uh, kind of getting their information, how many kids did you screen? And then dividing that by the total student population to generate these percentages. And that is to show you that we're right in the middle of the pack. We're doing a great job, um, reaching as many students as we can. And on this slide, we see really what kind, what comes down to the important stuff about screening. Um, we have seen one hundred and two vision referrals. And this was, this was generated before yesterday. So of the five hundred sixty screenings we had done, a hundred and two vision referrals. Um, and that doesn't mean the child, the child absolutely has to have glasses, but it does mean the nurse that we work with, Nicole, says, you should really go to an eye doctor. Do you have health insurance, X, Y, Z? If you don't, here's a vision voucher. Here's where you can go to get these, uh, to find these resources. Next slide, we see referrals that are made due to a new potential developmental concern. So a speech concern, a cognitive concern, a fine or gross motor concern, um, social emotional concern. And then on that bottom, uh, little bar is, we noticed a concern, made a recommendation and a parent said, no, thank you. Hopefully, no, thank you. Um, so the big thing, the big deal being that's twenty-eight percent of the students who come through the office receive some sort of referral from us. And then, you know, that hits the real slow roadblock of, uh, the evaluation team is just so backlog right now. Uh, and that's a problem. Next, we're looking at misinformation, um, that's kind of surrounding us in the district. One is people think that early childhood screening is a kindergarten entrance exam. They think it's a special ed evaluation. They think it's a kindergarten assessment. These are all different things that exist within our school district. Uh, some parents think they, they should wait until the last possible moment to get their child screened so that they pass, which you can pass the screening, but so that they don't fail the screening. There are no fails at screening. And, um, yeah, I think, I think another, uh, big issue, I'll just skip to the last. Um, children are enrolling in kindergarten without completing an early childhood screening. This is something that in the screening team, we've been working really hard with the enrollment center to, um, and, and communications created a QR code so that if a parent comes in and they're enrolling their kindergartner, um, they can scan this little QR code. If they don't have a screening already done, they can scan the QR code, get signed up, uh, and have a screening. We have been working with, like I said, Aaron and Matt in communications to develop some, uh, communication methods. We've got a great, a great little video. We've got posters, postcards. Uh, we're working with libraries, childcare centers, uh, updated website content, um, as well as working with our cultural liaisons to make sure that we're doing all of this work equitably. Okay, so then here, uh, this is what our team currently looks like. Uh, we have a nurse who's four days a week. We have two screeners who total up to a one point oh. Uh, we, our voluntary pre-K teachers have all been trained on screening and can help when needed. We hire so many interpreters to help with the screening process and that is a huge part of the budget. Um, and I just also feel like it's important to say, every time that I have come to these two and said, we're drowning, we need more time, we need more resources, we need more people, they make it happen, which is really vital, um, for the success of our learners. So the goal here is to, uh, essentially limit the backlogs that exists every fall cause no matter how hard we try, there's gonna be kindergarten students who don't have screening. But, um, this year it was roughly, I believe it was a hundred twenty-eight. And we got all those screenings done. Uh, most districts don't do that. Most districts just let those kids go through the system. So we've been doing our best. Uh, action steps, this one's still me? I think it's still me. Okay, so we offer twenty-three screenings a week. You can see all of this. I'm not gonna read it to you. I'm sorry. Oops, I'll go back, but, um, to sum it up, we are, we're, we're working at full tilt. Um, we've, like you saw earlier, we've screened more students this year than we did all of last year. We have two hundred and twenty-eight openings still to, or that are mostly full for the rest of the year. Um, we're working with the elementary school nurses to try to staff summer screenings where we're hoping to offer two hundred and twenty-five slots to really get those last kind of kindergarten stragglers screened. Um, partnering with childcare facilities, we've so far screened in four different childcare facilities. Nobody else in the, in our area is doing that. Um, and we screened over a hundred kindergartners. It's, it's been a lot of work to build this system. And I feel like we are doing, when I talk, when I have meetings with the other early childhood screening coordinators in our community, in like our metro area, um, I'm brand new at this. And they're like, Danny, what are you doing? And I'm like, well, I'm reaching out to childcare centers. I'm doing this. We're going to the library. We're putting up flyers at the grocery store. We're putting up flyers here and there. Um, so it's, uh, it doesn't take a lot, but it does take creativity and it does take leadership that says, yeah, go do it. Like, can I try this thing? Yep, go do it. And that's what we have currently. And so I'm very grateful for that. Action steps continued. Uh, we screen all of our VPK and kindergartner jumpstart kiddos. Um, this year, we just started partnering with early childhood special ed cause that didn't exist, like a, a partnership didn't exist. Like, we make the referral and then they're gone. So now we have a tracking system so that when the end of the year comes, we can report to the state, how many referrals did we make? Of those referrals, how many kids are actually getting services? How many of them had an intake, um, et cetera, et cetera? And again, um, yeah, working with communications to create, there's a great little video on the early childhood screening page if you wanna look that up at, at your leisure. And working, again, building partnerships with the enrollment center because Kelly is kind of the font of knowledge when it comes to who doesn't have a screening. So she gives me massive lists and then Nicole, Sue and I sort through those lists and figure out who's already in special ed and doesn't need a screening, who had a screening in another district and just didn't report it. And, um, yeah, so working as a team.
And you make a hundred phone calls.
Lots of phone calls.
So, a couple of things. First, takeaway should be, if we know that the kid exists and they're three years of age or older, if we know they exist, they get screened, right? We can't account for the kids that we don't know exist. We even go to the birth records and make phone calls. Like, do you still live at that address four years later? Three years later, right? Second, uh, we are on pace to screen more kids this year than we have in like the last five to six, seven years, right? Um, and that's due to Danny and Cynthia and the team. And then the last thing I would say is, when you are, most people have an inherent misunderstanding of what early childhood screening is. It's for the health and welfare of the child medically, physically. It's not a test where you're being tested on math or reading. They don't, it's not that, right? And so our goal as a team, uh, is to screen as many students as possible in our system by the age of three. Like, when they're three. Cause that gives them the opportunity to have two years of potential resources if there is something caught in a screening exam so that by the time they get to kindergarten, they have the best opportunity to succeed as good or better than their like peers, right? And so hopefully this has been a little bit, uh, illuminating, um, and we can, you know, separate some fact from some fiction. And, you know, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Just like, say, no, thank you. Um, I, when we had our child screened, one of our, well, both children were screened, but when I had our youngest child screened, it was great to be informed of a referral for auditory services. Um, and realizing at, before kindergarten to have been able to then get the speech therapy she needed to be ready for kindergarten. So, um, value the opportunity to, to do that for our kids.
I also think that the service is very, um, very necessary, um, because, and I'm glad that you did clear up the point of the screening is not to, um, make parents feel like they have to have their children ready to be screened. It's not like a test.
Right.
Because I think a lot of parents do feel that, the ones I, some that I know. So, yeah, and they feel like, well, we gotta wait cause my child's not quite ready yet. What, no, this is to help them get ready. You know, they may be services that your child can need, can use and be beneficial to them. So thank you for this service. This is great. And I do feel every child should have it.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yes, certainly.
Okay. I debated bringing the actual tool that we use for screening and I decided not to cause whatever, it's a lot of paper and they cost us a lot of money. But, um, to that, to that point, people don't understand that the screening is not like a, this is, this is how you pass. It's divided up by birth year and, uh, month. So it's like three point zero years old, three point one, et cetera, all the way down. And the score increases as the age increases. So, you know, to pass a screening as a three-year-old, it's like twelve points out of the sixty-four, um, possible points. So it's, yeah, people, it, people just don't know, cause they don't know what they don't know.
Right.
It's really down to the exact age, even if your child turns four tomorrow. But they were, they were screened today, they are three years and eleven months, cause tomorrow they are four. So it's very specific to the child's age.
Hope parents are listening and, and get that and can pass that information on.
Um, well, the one actual question that I had, I think you answered.
Okay.
Um, I was gonna ask how we're doing on the state requirement about all, kindergartners have to be screened within the first thirty days. And I think I heard you say, we are doing that. We are successfully meeting that requirement, which is great. Um, and as someone who has two preschool educators in my household, um, we were actually talking about early childhood screening at dinner tonight before I came here. And, um, so I know how important this is and I'm really appreciative of all the work that goes into making sure that, as you said, if we know they exist, that they're getting screened. Um, and it sounds like the majority of the case is before they start kindergarten, which is fantastic. So thank you.
I can comment to that one too, that, um, last year we had our, like it was in one of those slides, the voluntary pre-K kinder, uh, teachers are in the schools and they'll identify who's not screened. Within that first week of school, the, the teachers that are onsite there try to get the screening done and then make the connection right there in the building. They, we don't ask them all to come over here. We do it right, right there.
That's awesome.
And the only thing I'd like to clarify is that, cause this is also misinformation that is out there. The only requirement for a kindergartner to attend kindergarten is that they're five years of age, right? So if you don't have a screening after the statutorily required window, you still attend kindergarten. You can't kick them out. They can't go anywhere, right? And so there's some misinformation around, well, if they don't have the screen, they can't be here. No, they are allowed to be here because they are age eligible, period, end of story.
Thank you Chair Miller. Um, just a couple of questions and Cynthia kind of dovetailing on your comment. It sounds like, um, there are efficiencies that you find, um, in, um, with early identification, right? Is, can you speak to that?
Sure. I mean, the, uh, early childhood special ed has got two different components to it. Um, Scott's wife could probably explain this better than I can, but there's early intervention. And, and the goal with early intervention is that we provide opportunities before they go to kindergarten. Frequently with opportunity, the, um, where you were talking about, uh, hearing speech, they can be, by second grade, they're caught up with their peers and so that intervention fades away. Sometimes they, we really do identify a disability and so that can be, um, take longer or they may, they may stay with those services. Um, as far as with us, I mean, we love to have them connect with family learning or family education, early childhood family ed. And that can, um, help them connect with other parents of, that have children of similar ages. They, they can find out what resources are in our community. We can talk about all the wonderful things that happen at all nine locations where we have early childhood. So it's really a matter of connecting with resources, opportunities.
And, um, just hearing you talk about the, the backlog, Daniel, um, is there any, is there any effort to prioritize who you, who you screen?
Yeah, so current, this year, the priority since the, since the start of the new year has been incoming kinder-eligible students. So we've been working with Kelly to generate a list once a month. That keeps growing and growing and growing in number. Um, and then it's phone call after phone call after email after email, um, to get as many folks signed up as we possibly can. And I think that's, you know, I can't make anyone come to their screening appointment. So that's like, there's always gonna be some backlog, right? But we do our darndest to, uh, get as many people here and get them in, through the screening process as possible.
The other piece I would add to that is, you probably have inferred from the presentation that screening in school districts essentially amounts to an unfunded mandate by the legislature.
Right, yeah.
It's really, right, so we devote as many resources as we can. Could we always do more? Sure, but it's not cheap. Uh, and if you notice in the presentation and Danny doesn't give himself and the team enough credit, you know, an average, um, screening, around sixty minutes for an English-speaking family with all of the different pieces. If you have interpreters, when you're having a conversation with somebody in your own life and there's an interpreter or translator, right? Sometimes takes double, triple the amount of time. So when one screening can last two to three hours and you're trying to do twenty-eight of them a week, then you start adding up the hours and the staff time and the nurse time. It's, it is, it is a really critical thing that we do for kids and families, but it is also, um, a very time-intensive and costly process.
And thank you for pointing that out. That actually was the first question that I had and you had answered it right as part of the presentation, Jason. That actually was the first question that I had and you had answered it right as part of the presentation, Jason. So thank you for that. And then, the last thing, I appreciate how innovative community ed continues to be. You know, that, you know, Daniel, you, you pointed it out, just, you know, can we do it? And, yep, you know, look, just go try it and see if it's successful. And I think that's just, it, it speaks volumes to, you know, what is made possible for our students through creativity and innovation. And I just want to thank you guys for that because I think, you know, being able to do the screenings and being as dedicated to that and making the most of their pre, preschool life as possible is going to set them up for, for success coming in. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I actually really appreciated hearing about the stuff we're doing that is not being done around us in other districts. I love hearing that stuff. Diving into that just for a second, you talked a little bit about going to daycare centers. So I assume these are like private entities and such. And so, how are you deducing that they're destined to be 191 students and...
So, I reach out to the childcare coordinator and I say, "Can you generate a list of students who are three to five years old whose address falls within our district borders?" And so, they say, "Yep, here's your list." It's usually between eight and 25 students that, so far, that, at the child centers we've gone to. And then we double-check that and then we go do the screen. Because as long as they live in our district, we can screen them. It doesn't matter if they're going to open and roll somewhere else, doesn't matter if they're going to go to a private school. If they live in 191, they should be screened by 191.
However, to tag on to that, as Cynthia discussed, when that connection is made in screening, particularly with three-year-olds, the team also informs them about, "We have a wonderful licensed childcare facility downstairs. We have unbelievable results with VPK students that we now have data around." And, oh, by the way, if you don't want to send your child right away to kindergarten, we do have preschool options as well in the district. And we can help you at the enrollment center get enrolled into kindergarten if you would like. So it is a way to interface and then educate and then hopefully recruit.
Yeah, I just, I was going to take that a step further. If you're not already, I would highly encourage to work with our communications department on, you know, the, the color-based stuff we have, it's all the high, all the way through to high school that's going on in the district. Get them early and let them know. So they're not, because they're probably already hearing stories about things that are misinformation among their, their, you know, group of friends that all have children at that age, so...
And I'll just share that, you know, Daniel came to Cynthia and I and said, you know, "Is it okay if I go and talk to Director Tinkler around a communications strategy?" And we're like, "Yes, this is great, we want to do this." And, you know, gave Aaron a little bit of the heads up. And Daniel, Cynthia, Aaron, Matt, Lisa, and others sat down and there's a very robust communication plan that is being planned for next year. We were speaking to Aaron just before the board meeting and that is already integrated into his budget for next year. And so, we can always get better. We think we're doing a pretty good job, but we can always get better. And the more information that we can share, the more students will get screened at three years of age. And that's really the ballgame.
Have you connected with the, some of the larger pediatric groups around here?
That's a good question. We haven't heard back from any of those.
Oh, really? That's unfortunate. If you could come in and do like a luncheon learn or something for them and just give them some highlights, I bet they would share that with their patients as they're coming through, so...
From, from my very limited experience with the medical field, when it comes to screening, it's... I mean, they're happy to tell a, a family, "Yeah, go get screened," but less happy to give some of their time for me to come in and tell them a little bit more about screening.
Keep on that.
I'd also like to say for the record, my name is Daniel, but I prefer Danny.
I think the doctors know if, if they, I think, I would say, if they see what they think is a referral, that is the most common time that they would refer to us. It's like, okay, I, they have some concerns and I think they're pretty good at making a recommendation for screening if they see a concern.
Right.
But in general, less so.
Well, thank you, thank you, all of you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yep, and keep up the hard work. I appreciate what you're doing under the confines that you have, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we are going to move to receive a report from Cody Hung, student board representative.
So, some fun stuff going on around Burnsville High School between now and...
Is your mic on there, Cody? All right.
So, starting off with Burnsville Strong, students made sandwiches on March 5th and on the day that we were off due to virtual day. And on top of that, two students were also planning and coordinating to place ribbons on trees across 191 schools and different district buildings. As we saw outside of Diamond Head, there are ribbons on more of the trees in light of tragedy that took place on February 18th with our fallen soldiers. On top of that, too, the Black Student Union hosted their showcase during sixth and, sixth and seventh hour on leap day, February 29th. It had a bunch of amazing, impressive performances that include dances, a fashion show, and sing-alongs that moved the audience together and really connected Burnsville's one community. Moving forward into the month, the, the blood drive will be occurring on March 29th on a Friday, which is going to be taking, take, which is going to be going on all day from the entire school day. That includes students Victoria Chung and Emily Tilburg, who were organizing and planning the entire project with help from different groups at high schools such as Burnsville Strong, the National Honor Society, et cetera. And there's always been some great successes between, with all of our blood drives that's taking place, especially the one last November, tons of student support and activism involved with that. And it's expected to have some amazing turnouts going into this year. Also, students in the music department took a trip to Costa Rica the past week, from March 3rd to March 9th, with over 60 students, 60-plus students in choir, band, orchestra attending the exciting trip, getting to explore the world a little bit and getting that city abroad experience, if you will. And then also, finally, Decca had the championship, their state, or sorry, not their state championship, but one of the regional championships this past weekend. A G Kenzel put the top score in the entrepreneurship test and Kira Thay became a finalist in the restaurant and food service management individual series. So, pretty exciting stuff going around. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from board members?
You just reminded me, Cody, have you heard anything about the robotics team?
I actually have not heard anything yet, though, if I'm not incorrect, they should...
I'm guessing it's right or it's coming up.
Did you hear anything?
No. So maybe next, maybe next month.
Perhaps, perhaps. I do remember when they came here for their presentation that they mentioned their competition was taking place either at the end of the month, going into the, going into April, but...
Any other questions or comments?
Just have a couple of comments. I just happened to read in the Burnsville Sun about the Class Act show for, in 191. It was in the Burnsville Sun. And it says it's now in its 36th year and the show raised more than twen... Well, over the years, $250,000 for Burnsville High School, the alternate high school, and Burnsville Egan Savage Transitional Schools, so best program. So I thought that was very impressive. And then, of course, the, I think it just ended in March, March 2nd, the, so, but anyway, so I thought that was this. And then also, the Burnsville High School Quiz Bowl team earned seventh championship title. So, that's also yay for us.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Cody. Now, we'll receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller and members of the board. Tonight, I want to share with you the news. We announced the staff and the community this afternoon. Our 2024 191 Community of Excellence Award winners. These awards are given annually in six categories to recognize 191 staff members who extraordinary contributions help us achieve our mission of each student future-ready, community-strong. This year, there were dozens of nominations highlighting the unique ways each individual and team contributes to our mission and vision. There are so many of our employees who deserve special recognition and it's wonderful to see your efforts honored by colleagues, students, and families. I'm just going to read the category titles and winners tonight for the sake of time, but I encourage everyone to learn more about the awards and what each category means on our website at ISD191.org/COEawards. In collaboration and partnership, this year's award winners are the career and technical education teachers at Burnsville High School and Sarah Henrick, special education teacher at William Burn Elementary. In the community engagement category, this year's winner is Mary Ann Ali, cultural liaison at Gideon Pond, William Burn, Ron, and Virtual Academy. For excellence in educational support, technology support specialist Jessica Meyer and Tyler Music are this year's winners. For teaching excellence, the award winners are Mike Sweeney, DAPE teacher at William Burn, and Hawa Salad, language arts teacher at Nicolette Middle School, and Nancy Meyer, media specialist, also at Nicolette Middle School. In the innovation category, Dr. Kathy Funston, director of strategic partnerships and pathways, is this year's winner. For leadership in action, there are three winners. CSA Coordinator Christine Fisher-McDonald, Burnsville High School Associate Principal Sarah Noble, and Associates of Arts Program Coordinator Becky Ackerson. And last, but not least, this year's Spirit of Excellence Award, which is given to a staff member who exemplifies the best of what it means to be a 191 employee. This year, it is given to Christine Haslock, Food Service Associate at Burnsville High School. Congratulations to all of this year's winners and to everyone who was nominated. Please note, the award ceremony is set for Thursday, April 18th, starting at 4:45 at Burnsville High School. And I can't wait to see you all there. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Questions or comments from board members? I do encourage everybody to watch the video. You did an excellent job and how many takes did that take?
One.
What? Wow. Pretty impressive.
It was two. It's so many as long as I described the actual category, so I needed to drink a water. It was two takes.
That's still pretty impressive.
All right, thank you, Dr. Battle. Lastly, we will receive reports from board members. Just a reminder that our committee reports are scheduled for our March 28th meeting. Do any board members wish to share a report?
All right. First, Director Connor, if you've never been to Class Act, I highly recommend it. It's always a very fun show.
You may or may not have one of the hams in the room right now, right?
All right, so my report. On Friday, February 23rd, I visited the Burnsville Alternative High School and met with Principal Kelly Ron in the context of BOSS being one of my board assignments for this year. We had a great conversation focused in part on some of the things that Principal Ron and her team are doing this year to improve family engagement at, at the school. It was very apparent from our conversation how proud she is of the school and the work that is being done there. So, I was glad I was able to take the time to be able to meet with her. And then, on this coming Monday, Director Chester, Dr. Battle, and I will be participating in the Minnesota School Board Association Day at the Capitol, where we will be meeting with several of our elected state representatives and with fellow school board members from across the state. So it promises to be a good day and we'll share more information, I'm sure, at a future board meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other reports? Yes, Strick.
Yeah, I, I always enjoy attending the Class Act variety show and this year was, like all the others, a great musical, talent, humor. You know, of course, the old-school band is always, always a favorite.
They had a new singer on one of the songs this year and she was incredible.
She was awesome, yeah. And that was on the eve of, of their departing for Costa Rica, so, so good for them. But, but yeah, and they also do a wonderful job raising money for scholarships for our students. So, kudos to our, to our teachers and our bus drivers who participated as well.
They sure did.
They did.
It was as entertaining, at least as entertaining as last year.
Any other board reports? We will now move to the business portion of our meeting and we'll start by approving the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it's generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. All right, the first item under new business we are being asked to approve on a first-reading basis, changes to policy 606, instructional materials presented by Amina Oftel, Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment. Welcome, Amina.
Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, members of the board, I'm sharing with you the, for the first reading, policy 606. This policy has undergone a significant revision, moving it from a policy on instructional resources to a policy that encompasses textbooks, instructional resources, and our library materials. Spurred on by a model policy from the Minnesota School Boards Association, rather than having two separate policies, one for library and one for instructional materials, we have combined the two together. It includes a significant new definitions that encompass the library materials as well as the media specialists. The section also describes the selection process for library materials by the media specialists and it updates some material, or some procedures for selection and reconsideration. So I would submit that to you for the first reading.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve on a first-reading basis the recommended changes to policy 606?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we are being asked to approve on a first-reading basis, changes to policy 416, drug and alcohol testing. Stacy Stovine will be presenting the recommendation. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, Director Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Bringing to you tonight, policy 416, drug and alcohol testing. This policy had some significant revisions presented both by MSBA and as a result of legislative actions this last session, which include the testing and the procedures for cannabis at the workplace. So you'll see a lot of that language now incorporated into this policy. The policy was reviewed, last reviewed on February 20th, 2024, and it is my recommendation to adopt the changes as presented.
I have a motion then for the, to approve on a first-reading basis the recommended changes to policy 416.
So moved.
Moved by Director Murso.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion on the matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Oh, okay. All right, so we are done with the new business portion of our meeting tonight. And next on our agenda is a work session to discuss safe and healthy schools and the fiscal year, we'll have also one on the fiscal year '25 preliminary budget. The time is now 7:58 and before we begin our work session, I move that we take a brief recess and return to the dais at 8:10 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Director Alt, was that? Oh, Director Murso, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Please return to the dais at 8:10 to begin the work session. On the agenda, Safe and Healthy Schools, presented by Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, and Dr. Chris Belmont.
Thank you, Chair Miller. This is a really important topic and something that is on the minds of parents, caregivers, staff members, and the general public. We know that the pandemic has had major impacts on families, including the social development and mental health of young people, and that has even put even more of a spotlight on how important it is for us to be prepared to respond to student needs. So I'm really thankful for this opportunity to share that. Dr. Belmont will be going through the report in detail, but I do want to focus on a couple of things initially. First, it is important to know that 90% of our students did not experience any kind of office discipline referral. You heard a little bit about that from our middle schools, about the flow chart for office referrals and classroom management first, office referrals, and so we can answer any follow-up questions about that. The vast majority of students are doing well and are well-served by the general education environment, or what we call the Tier Two, which is universal for every student. Second, our goal with students who are exhibiting any kind of behavior that is disruptive or potentially harmful to themselves or others is to intervene in a way that helps them be successful at school. Sometimes these behaviors come up because students don't have the skills and support they need to manage conflicts peacefully and productively, or they aren't sure what to do, and harmful behavior is one way to exert control over a situation. I am confident that they don't learn to use violence to solve problems from our staff, but they can learn those positive skills and tactics with the aim of ensuring everyone has the safe learning environment we all want. Earlier, you heard in the middle school presentation about non-exclusionary practices. It's important to note that that is Minnesota law, that you must employ that menu of options you saw for the Eagle Ridge, I believe it was that slide, before you exclude a student. Dr. Belmont can share a little bit more about when. We do have that option not to use those, and we actually have just recently had some significant professional development with not only our principals, but other support staff and our deans to help them work through scenarios. It was at our last professional development day, as this is a new law, and so really to help our leaders and school staff implement. I do believe we are taking the right approach to help with Safe and Healthy Schools, but human behavior is unpredictable, and as you heard from our, our school staff, that constant, just looking for improvement, just what more can we do? I will tell you, not in the upcoming budget presentation, because we're still vetting it, we are looking at an external provider that our parents have told us have been really helpful. Many of our fights that happen in schools, a lot of it stems from social media drama. And so the kids have been going back and forth, and so we have schools that have been using a facilitator, Erin Walsh, and so I have a proposal about to add her services district-wide, and she's giving me a couple of options. So that's one way we're looking at. What else can we do when we know a root cause is their social media? And so once they come into our buildings, they're already whipped up, and before you know it, they're just at each other, and staff is trying to understand, okay, what happened? Because I don't know about you, but I'm not on the social media with kids. So we need parents to have the tools to monitor, and that's what we're hearing from our parents that have used this tool, and Chris can answer more questions about that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Belmont.
Thanks, Superintendent Battle. For the board, and to honor time, I will move through the slides fairly quickly, but I'm also prepared and happy to go backwards if the board has any clarifying questions or further probes. You heard Superintendent Battle refer to our multi-tiered systems of support. I would ask the board to hold us accountable for making sure that the, the protocols and the tools and resources and examples that you're hearing tonight fit into one of these five buckets. That's our expectations. We partner with, we're in year two of a partnership with the Minnesota Department of Education around making sure that we have strong, multi-tiered systems of support, traditionally and historically, and you even cited in the school report, that triangle in the blue was MTSS, Tier One, Two and Three, and it's still an important component. However, the state's working with us, and we are working internally to lead conversations that are deeper than that, to point out to, to everybody, I'm sorry, to put resources that are about making sure that we have strong infrastructure of continuous improvement. Hopefully, you heard it in the board presentation earlier, the community engagement. Dr. Battle just mentioned some anecdotes there. If we don't have that strong partnership, we will have inverted pyramids, is our concern, whether it's academic or behavioral, and we know that some students need more while they're in our school setting. So finally, just making sure that we are really leveraging data and assessment, screening in the best possible ways with the best possible tools, and then really empowering our licensed professionals to work in collaboration, to make the most poignant, the smartest data-driven decisions in order to move students to Tier One success. So that's the overview. This slide shows a little bit more depth for what I've, what I've been mentioning. One example I'll share, though, I was in a meeting the other day, I was brought in to help with a Tier Three situation and to support the principal, and, and I, I did pause the meeting at one point and said, based on what I've heard, we do not have a positive reciprocal relationship with the family right now, and therefore our intervention will not be successful. That's what I, that was the determination I made, so I challenged the team to really go and work deeply, authentically and honestly, to make sure that that partnership was strong, so that that learner was getting the same consistent messaging, both at home and at school, about what we want to do and how we believe and have that trusting relationship. I suspect that that investment in the home relationship to repair that, trusting, trust will then lead to the strategic implementation outcomes being better. So I just share that example because the five, like, silos that you see up there are not silos, they're interdependent on each other in order for us to get that outcome. And for students with significant needs, or at least demonstrating behaviors in Tier Two and Tier Three, it really, it's complicated. It's really high-level work that the team is engaged in, and if they're not, if there's not synergy between those five buckets that you see in front of you, then we can sometimes get to that emotionally frustrated frustration point, which especially in behavior, occurs. The theoretical framework that, and Dr. Battle alluded to it, so I won't spend too much time on this slide, though, is equity behavior seen through an equity lens and through an engagement lens is everything we do. So we are not interested in compliance for the sake of compliance. We want our students to be empowered learners, that is what our board has charged us with, and therefore we want to make sure that we are working towards community justice in our schools, where every student can feel like they can do. We want to work towards inclusion whenever possible, because the research is very clear that inclusion- that inclusion is not only the morally just thing to do, but it's the most effective way to see people succeeding in life. And then finally, that just, that learning is our business. And like the previous presenters mentioned, if you're not in class with your teacher and you're not feeling good, you won't be able to learn. This slide demonstrates a little bit more of the brain research, which has come very far in recent decades. We know that if any human is, so the brain research has become more conclusive, that if any human is in the reptilian part of their brain, that's shown on that chart, that their IQ drops an average of 60 points, sometimes larger. So if you can imagine a young person that may be, or a person that's not able to communicate linguistically at the time, or has other barriers that exist in the system, that IQ drops, your processing slows down, your communication may be already impeded, therefore, you're going to communicate one way or another. And sometimes that shows up in behaviors that harm others, or themselves, or the community. Additionally, we all have these same basic brains, that if us as adults are feeling a certain way, or in our fight or flight, our IQ and processing also slows significantly, and therefore, we are not making decisions or processing in the best interest of ourselves or the students. So we are grounded in this data and everything we do.
Chris, my team, Amina can account to this. So we're human in emotion, and so I tell them you have to remain centered. So your mind, heart, your actions, your body, and then what triggers to get you uncentered. And so that's been part of our work as leaders, to stay centered. When you become uncentered, it doesn't help kids.
Right.
And so this, you know, research, I just wanted to share a little practical, that we all have to work on it. We're all human, and to not recognize that is dehumanizing. So this is, as educators, we always have to go to what we know about development first. So we spend a lot of time with that. Go ahead, Chris.
Absolutely. And if, for analogy, a lot of people can help understand, if we defined our marriage, or how we looked at our spouse by what happened in their weakest moments, then we would not have a successful marriage. We have to continue to understand that when someone acts out in their weakest moment, or when they're not, their processing's not there, that they still deserve that humanizing relationship. And it doesn't change our expectations. Our expectations are very clear. And in our student handbook, I believe is very clear, we have policy and processes that we hold dear. And if something doesn't go well, we want to be very strategic in understanding why and how to do better. A lot of what we've been working with, with our staff, too, is just to center relationships amongst each other. How are we talking about each other? How are we talking about our students? So that when there is a breakdown, we don't stay in that fight or flight mode for sustained time. I mentioned the handbook. The handbook is really a bridge between policy and practice. And I mention that bridge because it's a two-way bridge. So that's a lot of my work in my role on a day-to-day basis, is supporting principals and leaders in making that bridge seamlessly and effectively, going from policy to effective practice, checking back in if that practice is being effective and if it's aligned with policy. And our handbook is a good conduit to that. When behaviors occur, we really try to remove emotion, go into thinking, and place that through the lens of policy in the handbook, and then that helps guide our responses. So. Couple of the things that we struggle with sometimes, and maybe occurs just, and I'll also share the, what I do, the work I do with my principals, I expect for them to do with their teachers. We have to have that in every part of our system, that understanding of what's expected, what's best practice, and then how we're going to work together to get to better results. You know, just as an example from this list, they all, they all have kind of suggest intense, usually level three or level four behaviors that occur in our system, although our administrators, in partnership with our teaching staff, does place some of these things in level one or two in certain areas. So, for example, disorderly, two students that are having attention-seeking interactions in our middle schools, I see that quite a bit in the hallways during passing time, can initially be perceived as a level three or four fight. However, sometimes when I, like, today I was at one of our middle schools, I leaned in, listened, found out that the students were seeking attention incorrectly, identified it as a level one disorderly behavior, horseplay, messing around in the hallways. I was able to have conference with both students and make a plan going forward. And then I made sure to work with the dean to follow through, and they progress monitored throughout the day, so that the student's behavior did not intensify into either a different code or an increased level. So that's why it's important to identify what really is happening, implement an intervention according to that level, and then to progress monitor and collaboration to make sure that the behavior dissipates. Tier One practices is what we want all students to experience. We want all students to have staff that are making data-driven decision-making, that goes without bias or emotion. We want them to be making proactive relationships. We want students to have connections. We want students to hear positively at at least an eight-to-one ratio the things they're doing well, because the brain research says, every time you do that, it gives a hit of dopamine, and it reinforces the correct behavior that we're looking for. The students that were seeking attention incorrectly were also receiving dopamine. That's why we have to interrupt those negative behaviors that are reinforcing students and stop those, and then backfill it with a whole lot of positive relationships to work their brain out of that. Dr. Battle mentioned the ongoing capacity building. We knew, sitting with Director Oftedal, Director Pietrowski, and our team, and Director Buchanan, we knew when the legislation came out, we were going to have to do two things really well, understand and then engage. So we worked really hard to understand the new legislation. And then we spent over 16 hours with our leaders, not just principals, principals, associate principals, elementary student support specialists, as well as deans, coming together to really make sure we understand the new laws. And then we're working together to make sure that we are implementing practice according to policy and what we know to be true. And we know that we're going to take a hard pivot towards the REED Act next year. So we wanted to get as much of that attention focused this year, so that we expect to already be seeing, I believe we're already seeing benefits from that attention. And then also, now we can really focus on instruction next year. I was, this list from NED, I was really happy with our most recent professional development with Sarah Wolf from the Minnesota Department of Education. She works with attorneys on complaints, and she also does professional development in the district. She said, she said she was using our resources to then bring back to her team to send out to other districts. She says, her, she shared that we are very far ahead of the game in how we're implementing the new laws and expectations. So that was good to hear, because you just never know for sure how you're doing. And it's nice to hear affirmation from the external community sometimes. Okay, so just some examples from the field, some Tier One practices. So I want to just think about, again, where is that equity? Are we doing data? Are we developing systems? And are we implementing best practices? An example would be tardy checks. That's occurring right now at two of our schools are in implementation for that, Burnsville High School and Nicollet Middle School. It happens two to five, I've heard, as many as like 12 or 13 times a week. It's used to screen students that need extra support, getting from class to class in a positive, healthy, safe, and productive way. You can see some of the data, so I won't read it all to you. So it's used to screen, green circle. It's a system that engages all of the adults and the stakeholders within the system, as well as the students. And then it is a practice of support, because during the tardy check process, the staff will meet with the student, and they'll engage in either a level one, two, three, or four intervention. They, I've learned that at both sites, if a student is in the tardy check one or two times, that it's a warning, level one. And then they have different level two and level three systems to then interrupt those behavior patterns. An example of Tier Two practices is a check-in, check-in, check-out that you'll see at different schools in our districts. I know that some, that you've already heard about those through the school reports. This is students that need more, and they need something that's systemic, daily. And then there's a gradual release. So a check-in, check-out. As I've observed, there's a mentor assigned. A student meets with that mentor at the beginning of the day. They have goals that are created in partnership with the family. And then that mentor is reminding the student of the goals. They have a visual tracking. They receive positive feedback from their teachers throughout the day, both in written form and verbal form. And then that mentor loops back with the student at the end of the day and shares their progress. And that form then goes home to the parent. So if you think about those different MTSS pieces, Tier Two heightened, right? More. We can't do that for every single student. However, we expect, if we're having a healthy pyramid, to need to do that for anywhere from 5 to 15% of students at different times. Finally, I'll just say with check-in, check-out, there's always a plan for release. Any intervention, there has to be a plan for gradual release, because Tier One is always the goal, students to be able to succeed in Tier One. Tier Three practices, and that's usually the headlines when it comes to behavior, because they're more intense, or they're sustained, or they're both. And so that's where people feel emotion and frustration. And sometimes there's increased levels of harm because of that intensity. So when we identify that, it can be that repetition, or intensity, or both. And that's when we're being very calculated and strategic. We are, I was at another school today, where we, right now, we are meeting about this student every single week. So the team is meeting collaboratively once a week. There's been identified point people that are meeting with the medical provider. We have a release to do that every single week. And we have a different point person that's meeting with the parent every single week. So we have right now a five-day pacing plan, as well as the intervention list I saw today. We settled on, right around five to seven interventions that are going on a daily basis for the student. That's just about as intense as we can get, with the expectations that those weekly meetings will become every other week, every month, infrequent conferences, right? That's Tier One, parent-teacher conferences. But right now, because of the intensity of the behaviors, it's requiring the intensity of the support. Here's a little data picture from last year, 2022-23 school year. It gives you an idea of who's been hitting Tier Two and Tier Three in our system. So this is K-12. 89.5% of students did not require an office discipline referral. So that, that means, as we translate to the handbook, 10% of our students required a level two, level three, or level four response. The, depending on what literature you read, you really want, for a functioning triangle, you want to be in that 80 to 90% of students in Tier One. So we feel positive about that. It really doesn't change too much of our energy, except to make us feel encouraged about a lot of our Tier One practices. I glossed over Tier One, because our Tier One practices at our school is a four-hour report of all we do with behavior and academics. That's our business. That's everything we do, and everything you all hear about in these school reports. Here's a data picture about exclusion and how that's going. I feel, I feel encouraged by our non-exclusionary discipline work. I'm seeing it anecdotally every single day, and I expect to see it in the aggregate after the school year. I see intensity of behaviors diminishing overall. I know that sometimes the board hears about certain specific things. However, I'm in the buildings for 20-plus hours every week, and I'm seeing changes from year to year. So just to clarify, we've implemented non-exclusionary discipline practices, and we are seeing lower levels of frequency and intensity of behaviors across our system. And that's not brand-new, though. We've been, a lot of the NED list, we were already doing. We had to process what the policies and the law meant. So for example, like, the K-Three portion of the law gets a lot of headlines, and really didn't chase-
Repeat that for them, you're not supposed to suspend.
Kindergarten third grade, we're supposed to, so like Dr. Battle said, we're supposed to be implementing non-exclusionary discipline practices. That wasn't a shocker to us. We already were. It was living in our handbook and through board policy and practice. The kindergarten through third grade out-of-school suspension challenged schools to really avoid suspension at all, if at all possible, except in the instances of safety. So there is that safety disclaimer. We had to talk that out, what that all, what all that means. What we found as leaders is it really wasn't changing things monumentally. Some other pieces of the new law were different complaint processes for parents, that they could initiate complaints in writing. And so we developed processes for that in short order. Also, you may, you may recall through the policy review that recess, same, very similar to the kindergarten through third grade, which is students, we really shouldn't be holding students back from recess, except in this case of safety issues. The, here's some of the reasons for suspensions from last school year. We used a snapshot of one school year. So again, if you see-
Just a note on the weapon. It's both, it includes the look-alikes, too. Amina, am I correcting that? We had a brief discussion at our state superintendent's meeting today at a table with superintendents and other from across the state.
Actually, I think in our handbook, I'll double-check on that and get back. I think in our handbook, look-alikes appear in a different location. This weapons one is presented through DIRZ reporting. It's state prescribed, so we use that. I have to double-check on where look-alikes fall.
So we didn't come to conclusion either.
It's listed. I should have, yeah, I'm going to lean on, I know Director Buchanan back there has a printout of the handbook. It may be in a different location. But I hope you can see that, like, why, why was it too hard, heavy of a lift to adopt some of the new legislation? Because these are suspensions from last year. And as you can see, I hope you can see that they're safety-related.
And our largest is the fighting, so.
Uh, second.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, the disrupting, excuse me, you're right.
Disruption, yeah. Disruption or disorderly. So that would be where you're impeding the educational environment in different ways, but it's not necessarily like a physical fight, where people are intending to harm each other. And then assault would be intending to harm without mutual engagement, I guess, is probably, so. So here's the-
There's a whole lot of training with administrators to go through these definitions. It's very specific, and wanting consistency across the sites, or your data is not accurate.
Yes.
People are using different definitions.
I want to be clear and forthright. We are working towards that goal. So just like, at our last PD meeting, we're working with the deans. We're doing episodic case studies. We're going back to the student handbook, and we are trying to code and assign interventions properly. So the, and I'll try to get back to the board on the weapons question. Sorry, Dr. Battle, I didn't have that. Here's a look over time, 2016 to 24. One thing I wanted to add in this slide is 2019, 20, remember, we stopped with in-person schooling on March 13th. So it's just a little, and same as it goes for this, just, that's why you don't see a bar graph for quarter four, when it comes to- Um, when it comes to the frequency of fights that occur in our, in our system at the. For this one, it was the high school level. Same for our middle school level. I did not include, um, elementary data. I, I could come back with that. I, I thought it was. I didn't think it was interesting enough to identify trends and a lot of meaning. And to, to know that, um, in our handbook, the, the socio-cultural, um. Cultural linguistic status of a student, the age of a student and the disability of a student is taken into account. When the administrator decides if it's a level one, two, three, or four severity level, so. So there can be fights that aren't level three or four and, um, wouldn't show up on these graphs. It's rare at the secondary level. It's less rare at the elementary level. Kids can engage in some things that, um, the teacher intervenes on very quickly. And may determine not to report that as an office discipline referral. And again, I'll say anecdotally, I just don't see in the buildings. Um, I was, I was at four elementary schools today. I didn't see any, um, physical hitting of any type. I didn't even see level, um, two, three, or four disruption. I saw students, these teachers, they, they're teaching every single piece of a transition, everything, single piece of school classroom, um, movement. I guess I'd sometimes see the younger learners just bumping into people, but I do that too, so. The, uh, so the OSHA, um, data. So Stacy, let's speak to that. I think he, he wanted to make sure he presented the information. I present the slideshow. Here he comes. That's great.
He's so focused on budget. I'm sorry, Stacy. Yeah, so I, I'll. So there was a request of board to kind of understand, uh, staff injuries. So.
Staff injuries that are reported to OSHA have to rise to a certain level. And, and that's what the first paragraph is pretty much about. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean that we may not have more staff injuries, but they just don't rise to that level for OSHA reporting. You know, the, we have a process for first report of injury. That's what we, uh, use for work comp claims. Some of those claims come in. You want to document that just for the protection purposes in case an injury does become severe. But many of them are reported, um, and, and immediately closed afterwards because of the level seriousness with that. The next slide, if you would, that kind of represents all of our first reports of injuries, uh, for work comp. Uh, over the last three years that are related to, um, an incident that involved a student as well.
Thanks, Stacy. And then, um, as it relates to that, just, um, if anyone has any questions about the, um. Frequency and the intensity of incidents that occur in our system. I know we focus a lot on, um, behavior during this presentation. That's one aspect of providing safety. Another is emergency prevention and response. So there's some information about that. And thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Very good. Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up for conversation. This is a work session, so I suggest we just kind of jump into it.
Um, I guess you just said that you didn't include elementary in the statistics.
For fighting.
Oh, just for fighting? That was it? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, the other ones, the. Circles are K twelve.
Okay.
If you go back just for the fight.
No, thank you for that clarification.
Got it.
Want to break down with any, can just ask us.
Okay, um, so I just have questions about like, um, I got several, but I'm gonna try and break them down. So when you first have an issue, like. I guess depending on what the situation is. At what point do you start bringing in outside resources? Like from, you know, like, okay, this, this person, this child is having this issue. We need some, you know, we need to recommend the family use this resource, you know, that's something that's not offered within the school. To help them get back on track.
That's a wonderful question because Brett, like Dr. Battle alluded to, regulation doesn't start and stop with the school experience for students. So that is when we're, when we're working through intervention and making those data-driven decisions. We want as much assessment in, um, all areas. So, so school academics, right? How things are going in school for them. We want to partner with the families to find out medically, like how things are going. And then also social emotionally, what, what, um, what if any therapeutic needs they have. And then that's where that parent partnership becomes even more critical, um, when it comes to engaging some of those pieces.
We also have a specific protocol. Uh, we're still on this slide, the structural community safety when we do call our first responders in to help. Sometimes it's a family.
Yeah.
That they're working with the city resources and they want the team approach. Sometimes we ask. So I don't know if you wanted to share a little bit about that. That's, uh, another example of external resources, our cities. And then we also have our community, uh, uh, connectors to community ed, working with counties too.
Absolutely. I can't underscore enough the green box on this slide where we have to have that family and community engagement, especially in situations where there's. Consistent or intense tier three needs.
So I just, from my own personal experience, I, I had an older child. She's not in school anymore, but when, you know, she was receiving mental health treatment. And they said, okay, we, you know, recommend she have an IEP. But if a family say doesn't have that. But the school thinks that they could benefit from having, can we make that recommendation? Can we say we think they need an IEP? Does, can the school say that?
Team process.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
Do you recommend that?
Yep, um, so the, it's called a child find and it's, it certainly occurs. It's, we try to do it as much in lockstep with the family as possible. But yes, absolutely. And so, um, kind of what you're describing, other health disability, if the family, if, um, if the family presents or if we are aware. Of a, um, a diagnosis, the, through our student assistance, our stat team. Then they'll work with the, the parent to potentially, um. To, to potentially consider an IEP or an evalu- evaluation. For some students, they could be getting outside resources and not have the discrepancy in school, thus not needing the IEP. So that's how you think about always like, what, what's going on and what are we doing for the school? That social emotional and that medical and. Really trying to figure out for each student.
I, I mean.
I, I want to bring equity, um, in the conversation. So what, I was a special education teacher. And so, um, you work with the families through this process. But unfortunately disproportionately, black boys were identified for IEPs. So some families will not go through a special eval for that very reason. And so they want the school to have, uh, other resources. So, um, when it comes to special education, it is a process. Uh, parents have to agree. There are regulations that we have to file. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about that too. It's a team decision. Um, there is a process, a formal legal process that you go to if you really think, uh, the parent is, uh. We really need to have a legal process to have the parent understand that those services are needed. So I just want to put that in the space because I think there's misunderstanding about why didn't the school put them in special ed classes? Why are they here? So I just wanted to share that piece. Um, there are some communities, they are not going to have their child identified for special ed. Uh, because of the biases, um, and that the adultification, especially of black males. That they aren't allowed to be children, that somehow it rises to a different level of, um. Hyper visibility when they have the same developmental behaviors that you would see in other children. And the research shows it actually starts in preschool. So I want to put that in the space.
I guess my, my concern is that just, um, you know, depending on what type of, you know. Services are available depending on, um, you know, to the families, if they have a healthcare availability or not, they may not be seeking, they may not have. Mental health available to them. So they may not have a provider that can say. Here, I think that your child should have an IEP. So who's going to be the person that's going to recommend it for them? They wouldn't have anybody to say that.
So that's, we, go ahead.
The school district comes ahead and says that I think your child needs an IEP. It's up for the family to say to what level or to understand more or where to get the assessment. And to. Advocate, um, from the parent's perspective of, does the school's definition of how they label your child. Accurate, um, to make sure that they are getting the services that they actually need in our place in the right setting. Because the other thing that is big is understanding the very levels of special ed. So there, there might, you know, so like thinking of like tier one, tier two, or tier three supports. If you're thinking of a level one setting, your child's mostly with the mainstream of the rest of the students. With maybe a, a small chunk of their time taken away to meet with, uh, a person. Level two, they're still somewhat integrated in the classroom, but have EAs there, but then also taken up for a longer period of time. Then we look at level three setting, which is where you're, where there could be some integration based off of what the child needs to be able to be successful. Or maybe somewhat secluded in a smaller setting because that's beneficial for the student. From the parent's perspective initially feels punitive, but, um, but from that perspective. That's where you see in some of our buildings to base off of. Um, in those level three settings, you might have students who have, um. Higher needs of support due to autism, so they have non-verbal or, or whatnot. Or you have the, the students that are quote unquote labeled emotionally, behaviorally disturbed, which is a higher. Uh, declassification of our black students. And, and in that case, then they're in another building setting and the level three. Um, or they're, um, less, I mean, they're. We don't like to use the term high functioning or low functioning, but I will at this moment. Higher functioning autistic students are in a different building in a different setting. And, um, one of the things that, you know, hearing about, um. Safety in our schools or, you know, student fighting or student dysregulation. My concern is the abundance of those are, are students who need higher levels of support. And so understanding more of that and under, and then learning here, uh, going to a question I have. Is under the, the fighting or any of the incidences, are, are those, um. Our students in special ed, um, are those incidents as part of the data that has been reported? Because we've been hearing that in certain instances, but you know, we might not say that that's reported as fighting because of the additional services or the. The things that other supports that they're getting. Is that right?
No, I, I, I think I was jumping too quickly to some things. No, just that our handbook expects us to look through that prism as we're making decisions. I can say it's for sure from the secondary level. I'm not certain exactly all the elementary interactions and how those are reported. However, from the secondary let it, level, if two students are engaged in the behavior as described by the handbook. It's reported as fighting regardless of if they have an IEP or not. And then just great, very like healthy discussions that you're having because we're having those same. What's, what do students really need? I, I am, um, I'm grateful that I see stronger and stronger green box. Family and community partnership as well as our infrastructure and our database decision-making is improving exponentially. So therefore I think we're getting more accurate. And then that, therefore the trust in the team. And then the trust with the student that we're recommending things that are in the best interest of the student. Dr. Battle alluded to some of the national data, so that, like, the day, the data is pretty clear that the more. When you place a student in a more restrictive environment, it becomes increasingly difficult to ever get them back to a less restrictive environment. So we take that decision very seriously, um, and want to get it right.
And I'm glad that you said you see that improving because back when I was working in the school with EBD, uh, students. We didn't have so much family, um, collaboration. It was just more so assessing, this is what your child needs and do you agree type of thing. And, you know, the parents didn't have a lot of input, so. Well, for whatever reason that was then, but we're growing. So that's, that's really good to hear.
Well, I think it's due to the board having us well-resourced, in my opinion, as well as our tools of cultural proficiency. Which gives, helps us examine ourselves in order to do better in partnership with others.
I have a question too about these tardy checks. Um, you kind of mentioned cla- for classes. Does that also include, um, absenteeism in school period?
The tardy checks would, would address students that are in school and not attending classes. So they'll sweep, they're, they'll move through the, the building in teams and they'll check bathrooms or.
Okay.
Corners or places where students are avoiding class. That's really the, the goal of students either, um. Avoiding class for peer attention or avoiding class because there's some other big underlying need preventing them from getting into the classroom.
So not the truancy part. Okay. That's what I was just.
Well, you had a term for that, Chris. It was in-school truancy.
Yeah, that's a kind of industry term now and it's really popped since COVID, um, when I speak with other schools, especially high schools. We did, we do try to do a lot of work externally too, um, getting our students back in. We used to do. Do more of that, but we want to continue.
While we're on that subject, I'd like to dive a little bit further down into the in-school truancy, specifically at the high school. My goal is to learn more about it, um, what's really happening because I've heard a fair amount about it. So you mentioned five times, twelve times. I've heard it typically happens pretty much every day. Is that a fair average, at least once a day?
Yeah, I think I would, based on what Principal Alston and, um, Principal Sandoval mentioned. Probably, I mean, three to five times a week would be typical and then sometimes more.
Okay. And my understanding is in these sweeps then that the students are moved to one of our larger, uh, classroom environments. Then they're asked to, to identify themselves one by one. Are we capturing data on who's there when? We're, we're taking down name and student ID number or whatever, so we can.
Correct.
So we have data on the students and how many of them are, are repeat.
Correct.
Involvement in this. Um, and I am assuming that at some level, we have a systematic triggering of parental involvement then, uh. Okay. And what are we doing about the students that refuse to go to those? You know, I've heard of that too, the students refusing to even attend to, or I assume they just immediately go to a level two or three or whatever. Is that correct?
I would need to know a little bit more about that situation.
Maybe it doesn't occur, but it's anecdotal information I am hearing. And then, um, once we've captured their information and such, and what do we do with them then at that point?
Uh, then they're typical, my understanding is they're typically returned to class after whatever intervention is put into place. So, um, I believe like you mentioned that, uh, if, if it's a student that's one or two times, there's a discussion. Sometimes there's a logical reason that the student was, was in the tardy check. And then the student is, um, either escorted through a pass or a staff member back to class. That's, that's the outcome for, um, all students as far as, unless, I think sometimes. That's, they all come for all students as far as, unless I think sometimes at a certain level, a parent meeting is called at that time in the school.
Well, you know, I would encourage follow-up. I've heard, again anecdotal, the students just leaving and going the opposite way down the hallway. So basically went right back into the environment that was causing the sweep in the first place. So it'd be comforting to know that we're making sure they're getting back to their classrooms. So, you know, I overall, and I'm going to have more questions about some of the data points and such, but overall, you know, I see a very structured, systematic approach to this, which is healthy and good, and I'm happy about that. Equitable and, you know, has its clear definitions and such. One question I would have is how do we feel that our staff and the ones that are dealing with and interacting with students on a daily basis across our buildings are empowered and understand these systems, I guess? You know, too often I hear stories of staff members feeling like, well, I know what the rules are, so I have to follow them where common sense would have not maybe have been a more appropriate approach to the situation. I'll give you an example. I heard, again anecdotal, but of one of these tardy sweeps where a student was attempting to get to the classroom, was a minute or, you know, were seconds late till the bell rang outside the classroom. Tardy sweep is announced, teacher closed the door, said you have to leave. Student wanted to be in the classroom, wanted to attend class, just didn't get to classroom in time, instead was sent down, processed, missed out on the, you know, education time of that hour or whatever, whatever it took. So those kinds of things are discerning if I hear that, you know, because the objective should be to get the kids out of the hallways and into their classroom learning, not processing them through paperwork and taking up people's time and stuff. So I would encourage that we make sure that everybody understands the objective as much as they understand the rules, right?
So let me give you an example of experience, what that can be problematic letting them in after the bell rings. Well, Mrs. so-and-so lets me in, why did you not? So kids know inconsistency and it may be she shut the door, the bell rang, I was right there. And so it's very interesting how this plays out. Kids will call us on it. So I just want to share with you, if the rule is when the bell rings, they have to be in, I don't encourage people slamming doors and other people, but well, I was just 20 seconds, 30, it was, let me in. Kids pick up on those things. And so there's common sense and it's amazing how they, the grapevine, they will say, yep, she'll let us in. We can, we can be five minutes.
I understand that, but common sense would say that the teacher probably knows that student and would be like, well, you're not that type of student. I'm going to, you know, this was
That's entitlement and privilege.
Well, okay.
So you got to look at, some kids will say, yep, you let certain kids in, but you don't let other kids in. So there are many layers to this. And I, I'm taking a little privilege because I spent most of my career in high school. This is a continual problem.
I understand that.
And then when you don't follow the rules, if you start to bend even a little bit, the kids pick up on it. And so I know it is really tough. I was right there, let me in.
Yeah, and I think
So we can work on helping people understand that, but that consistency and once you start bending those rules, the kids just pick up on it. I'm just telling you, it's amazing. And then it just, it just spreads. You're not being consistent, so.
And I think we're always walking that line, like I want to be clear too, that I feel encouraged, but we, we are not there. We have identified many growth points. One of them too is to work out of a culture of compliance and make sure that we have a culture of clarity and learning and consistency. So I do think sometimes we haven't made it where we want to be with every staff member so that they're really grasping the mindset and the goal that we need for these different systems so that we're getting the outcomes we want. Because going back, like if we are doing things that are further harming the relationships that we have with students and families and each other, then we're not going to get to our goal anyways. We're going to get less desirable behaviors overall, so.
I understand all of that, but a range of 19 to 181 students, three to five times a week is deeply, deeply concerning. That, you know, 52 average means we have 52 kids roaming around the halls of the high school three to five times a week.
And I would, I would be happy to walk any board members through the school so that they can see the giant amounts of students that are going from classroom to classroom. We have to, in my experience, that 52 students, it's not, it's not the same students. I'm sorry, it can be the same students over time that have a persistent challenge. However, if we really stick with students, I then see them in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade changing their behaviors. So we don't change our expectations. We're constantly trying to look at through the prism of, I mean, we want all, we don't want 52, we want it to be zero. However, it's important to also acknowledge that we have 1,800 students that aren't part of that 52 on a regular basis. And we want to continue to firm that up, make sure they stay, and then to really do some of the hard work. Sometimes it is that tier three work that Director Chester mentioned, very difficult, long-term work to help get them back to that spot.
And to really get to the root of why, in my experience, asking kids, having done tardy checks when I was a high school AP, why aren't you going to class? Well, he doesn't like me. Where are you basing it on? Well, three weeks ago, this teacher said this to me and I'm not going back to the class. It's really that intensive work, why are you here? And then the intervention, and it was simply having a conversation between the teacher and the student. And then the kid was fine to go back to class for the rest of the semester.
And I guess if I
It's consistent work with, even if it's 181, to get to the root cause of why they're not going. And it's just amazing how kids think about things and, you know, suspend your assumptions of why they're out there.
And I guess, you know, kind of dovetailing on this, we've been doing the tardy checks. We started them in fall of this year?
Correct. Principal Sandoval brought that system.
Only at Burnsville High School in Nicollet?
That's correct.
Why don't we do them at Eagle Ridge?
I don't know, I'll have to ask. I feel like right now we're still not to standard work on it. I'll have to ask Mr. Hellkey, I didn't interview him before this. I'm just aware that they're not doing that.
Because I think, so not to derail this, but just one, one little side note asterisk, if we're talking about equity and we know that the middle school students all end up pretty much at the high school with some exceptions, you know, the expectation is you're in class. So I would expect that, you know, what's good for one is good for the other. If tardy checks are good at Nicollet, then they should be good at Eagle Ridge. Since we've been doing tardy checks since the start of the school year, pretty much, I imagine, you know, you've been reaching out to the families of those 50 some odd students that are in the halls.
I mean, I personally haven't been.
No, I know you haven't, but we, the collective we have.
We have been really stressing, especially at our secondary schools, that green box, making sure we have reciprocal relationships. And then I know, I've seen they're kind of, they're, the protocols within the, that I believe after, don't quote me, but after three, that's when a family outreach is made.
So, so the, in the schools where we do tardy checks, leadership knows the families, they've reached out to them, they know who the students are.
I can infer that, yeah.
For the most part, right? So then we must have data in terms of the success of the tardy checks. Right? So are they successful? Have they been successful in terms of addressing the root, the problem that we're trying to address, which is getting those students that are in the halls in the classroom? And if we've been successful, how successful have we been?
Yeah, I can look into that deeper. I asked that question and Carolyn and Jesus weren't quite ready to say definitively. They believe that the data is trending downward, but I don't have that totally.
It's different kids every day and it's a different reason. Some, my friends and I just wanted to hang out, we didn't want to go to class today. It can really change different kids all the time.
So I want to make sure we keep this conversation focused because I know there's reasons and all of that and, you know, different people have different inputs. What we really wanted to do tonight was learn if we have the proper systems in place and if we're capturing the proper data so that we can have a, you know, a balanced conversation about the outcomes. I'm trusting that if, you know, if we do have somebody that needs assistance or is being picked up in various, whatever processes we're doing, that we do, we have a great caring staff that's going to address those circumstances. But what I really want to focus on is, you know, the numbers and are we worried that we are not putting the right systems in place?
Well, I can just share for you as someone who's devoted 23 years to, in a lot of spaces, behavior management, that I feel really confident in the way we are resourced. I feel confident in the leaders that we've hired, the licensed leaders that we've hired in our buildings. And I feel confident that we are implementing systems that are aligned to policy and best practice. I do believe there's still work to do, whether like has been mentioned around, around mindset or how systems are working within that MTSS framework as effectively and as consistently as possible, so.
And I think the other part of connecting resources when we call families and they say, I expect them to go to class, I have three jobs, I don't know why. So I need help too. Parents will tell us that. Help. I don't understand why they're not going to class. I send them and then I hear the call that they're just hanging out in the hallway. So families will ask us, I need help too with my teenager.
Just a clarification, so the tardy checks are brand new this year? And is, was that set up as a way to try to add a level of intervention or connection to have kids more in the classroom? Just because previous in the high school, when my child was there, parents are called every day. If your child is tardy to one or more classes or
We still get those calls.
Or missed or were absent from so many classes.
Yes, they're No, I, I'm aware of that circumstance, although that isn't 100% functional and personal experience either, but
I was called every day.
Yeah, Director Chester, and I'll just clarify that tardy checks, as far as how consistent the systems that are currently being implemented are, this is the first year. I believe that they've been tried at different times.
I think it was more like, what was the intent of having them? Is it, is it more to create a level of intervention to try to then engage to have the kid come back? You know, was there, was there an intentional strategy to initiate this process?
I'd say it's threefold. If you look at the tri- Venn diagram there, that it's to create a system that's consistent and getting adults on the same page as well as students. It's to collect data and screen for further need and intervention and then practice of the interventions during that time, helping students that, hey, this is really important to get from class to class on time. And that's the expectation of the school to keep students that are in tier one doing the right thing on that, in that same frame.
I would, to Director Alt's point, I would encourage, I would ask for some further information once Principal Sandoval has had a chance, because it would seem pretty logical to me that if you are capturing, you said you were capturing the individual student information, and obviously we don't need individual student information, but, you know, someone needs to be able to look at it and say, student A is now been three, four times and now, and that was earlier in the year and now is not doing it. You know, that would be a positive outcome. Is, are we there? Or is student A still very sporadically throughout the, you know, how are those numbers breaking out? What are the results we're seeing from the
Is that data shared at the students' success teams at each grade level?
Yeah, they're constantly looking at success data. It's really hard to correlate an outcome to one intervention because we are, this, I put example from the field because our students are experiencing multitudes of tier one interventions every single day in our schools. Additionally, academics, right? And I, I wish our pyramid looked like this for academics. I can say it's not, so we need to put a lot of energy there as well. Regardless, we can certainly keep diving into the data, keep making sure that if we're going to leverage energy in our system, that it's yielding positive outcomes.
And also, and also I think in addition to, you know, reassurance that the system that you put in place is having a positive effect because I'm sure that it is and it will. You know, these are human beings that we're talking about, they're teenagers. I mean, we're all social human beings. Sometimes it might be, okay, there's a group of kids that are friends, right? And maybe, maybe by, by connecting with that group of friends and giving them interventions, you know, that's, that's a story in and of itself that, okay, we just, we just addressed five kids and now, you know, they're going to, they're going to class the way that, that we and their families all want them to. That's an anecdotal story, that's, that's a success story that, that, you know, I mean, it may not just be a single student, right? I mean,
I mean, I just, I spoke with, and again, I know we can't just sit and talk anecdotally, but it proves your point. I spoke with a student last week at the high school. She's, she was in class and she was actually, she was in a rigorous course, CIS class, and I just said, hey, because I haven't been there in two years. I knew her well in ninth grade. And she just, we huddled up and I just said, congratulations. She's, she showed me her grades and how proud she was and then she shared with me that, that, that they stopped co-chopping. I, because I said, what's happened? What was the big change? I thought maybe the, a teacher sparked her inspiration or anything that, she said they lived in like six different places in ninth grade and she was unhappy and now she's happy. So I don't, I don't know who I'll intervene there to help the family get to that spot, but that was the, that was the correlative intervention that mattered for her according to this student, so I don't, to be honest.
Can we look at the slide 13, out of school suspensions? Can we just define those? Are those days of suspensions or are those students of suspension or?
Is this the right slide, Chair Miller?
Yes, correct, correct, yes.
So this would be, how many times a student was assigned a suspension regardless of how many days, so?
I see. So this is one occurrence of suspension, could have been a one day, could have been a half a day suspension, could have been five day suspension, we don't know that, okay.
Correct.
And we don't know how many students are repeating in this. I am assuming one student is responding, is not responsible for all these suspensions, but theoretically it could be, okay. One little data point I would, in presenting something like this, I would maybe have put one chart just the high school and the other chart the two middle schools and maybe set the accesses to equal on them because it's a little misleading. So I, for the benefit of anybody viewing this, we have four years plus two schools going into the high school. So naturally you would assume the high school is significantly larger, right? Just, just a point of clarification, yeah.
So thank you for that.
Yeah, no, no problem. Then I, and then I'll get back to anybody else who wants to, I just, I wanted to get down to the end where we talked about OSHA and staff reports of injury. Now, so we defined OSHA and Stacy talked about requirements of reporting on 17, but then in 18, we have a staff report of injury. Are those the same state, is, is 18 this thing here, is this all OSHA reports or, so those are not, not the same? It's, okay.
It could be a scratch, a bite, a fall, concussion, yeah.
These are first reports of injuries. If a staff member gets injured in any way, shape, or form, this triggers work comp, the work comp process. The work comp process is different from any type of OSHA reporting. Being a school, we are exempt from certain types of reporting, the reporting that we have to do, hospital stays, loss of eye, death. There's another item that was on the list, I'm sorry, pardon me? Loss of limb type of a thing. But first reports of injuries are not the same thing as OSHA reports.
Okay. So then we have an FY24 box here, 112. Can I assume that's to the time of when this data was pulled? That's not, we're not yet done with 24, right?
Right, it's not for this full year.
Right, well, yeah, that's fine. I just, so Right. Well, yeah, that's fine. I just, so we, we can assume we're going to probably have a few more, um, because we're not out through the year yet. So can, can we, do, I, I, do we have any kind of insight into why we're going from forty-eight to ninety-one to probably a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, it looks like?
I think we should be clear about FY twenty-two, that we weren't fully in school and that.
We were hybrid that year.
In that time.
Good point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. In, in. FY twenty, it was twenty-one, twenty-two. Now we're.
We started hybrid.
We started, but it wasn't the full year of hybrid. That was twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
Was FY twenty-one.
But, but I think the first part of fall and then we were, then we closed.
We're kind of in and out.
Yeah, we weren't, we were, we were not in full in person for that whole school year.
We were for most of it though, but you're right.
Um, and, and just, that brings me, this would include falls and injuries, all, any kind of injury, correct?
Yep.
So even if a staff member was working at home and slipped and fell, I assume they would have had to report this here, right? No, we didn't in that environment?
These are workplace, these are workplace injuries.
So we were virtual, we didn't, we weren't responsible for any injuries while they were teaching from home or whatever?
I, I can't control what's in your house.
I was not aware. That's a sidebar question, but I didn't aware, wasn't aware of that. Okay. All right. So given maybe twenty-two is artificially low, but still we have an increase. What, can we talk to that at all? We have any insight into that?
I, I honestly, I wouldn't want to speculate. I mean, you have all sorts of different trend lines, different, uh, points of data. Different students that we're, we're serving up and down the line. I mean, this is, there's not one flat answer to that.
Okay. Is there a segmentation of that data that can be performed? So I, you know, for lack of a better term, um, serious to mild incidental or something like that, you know?
So we, we have kind of terminology that says open or closed, so like the cases are closed. Open would be where we have, um, the, the claim may not have been settled. So sometimes somebody may fall, um, not, I'm not talking student related. They may fall, have a back injury, uh, they may have to go for physical therapy, they may have to have surgery. That case for a work comp claim remains open over time. Okay, until everything has been resolved and settled and the person is able to return to work. Then it becomes closed. We only have, I believe, one that was open from FY twenty-three still. And the ones that are open in FY twenty-eight is less than ten. But some of that's because they just recently occurred as well. So some of these things are still lasting.
I guess my point though is it, for the sake of, again, Matt, the, the point today was to try to get, you know, facts on the table and talk in language that's clear and understanding. There's a significant difference from a teacher twisting their ankle on, you know, moving from one room to another versus being involved, assaulted in a, in a confrontation with a student or whatever happens. So if, you know, we could divide those up a little bit, that would be advantageous for the conversation.
That, sure, that's not.
Because I don't want to, I, I, I mean, I, I, I don't want to give a false interpretation of what's going on either. That's, if maybe the rise is not, maybe it is just an increase in, um, you know, whatever. Could be reporting, could be just this, you know, more propensity to report, could be a number of things, who knows?
We would definitely want to scrub the data as far as any private information that would be.
Of course. Yeah, I don't, I don't need an individual, again, high level segmentation would be fine, you know, so. That's my car parked over there, so it's entirely possible. That's not me. I probably just set mine off. All right, on to. I'll excuse, I'll just go make sure.
Go ahead. Continue the conversation.
No, that's good. The last slide. Yep, that's fine.
Oh, is there any more questions?
I was going to ask about the staff thing, but Chair Miller already asked about it, so. I, but like him, I would be curious to have a better understanding of the context or the severity, like the, the raw numbers aren't super helpful.
Sorry, Director.
It's a red dodge.
A red dodge. Anybody have a red dodge, your car alarm is going off. I was just saying that the, kind of what Chair Miller was saying, that the, the raw numbers of staff injuries are not as helpful as it would be if we had some sense of, I don't know if it's the severity or the context of, you know, like was it a student incident or did they slip on, probably not this year, that they would have slipped on the ice, but, you know, things like that, that it would be helpful to have a better understanding, especially with it being such a large increase over last year with us still having two and a half months left in the school year. So at some point, for me, it would be helpful to better understand more than just the raw number of staff injuries.
I would still say those summary leveled data to not drill down too, too deep. But, yeah, and then maybe of the incidences that involve, um, students by, um, school level. So like what's in elementary school, what's in middle school, what's in high school? And preschool. And then realizing that there should be a subset for, um, I don't want to necessarily call out special ed specific.
I can't do that through first reports of injuries. I mean, I don't have that type.
We don't know the setting.
This is coming from the adult.
Okay.
And the adult is reporting, this is what happened and this is the injury in which I occurred, that occurred. I, I, I mean, I know what buildings, I know what staff, I know what classification, EAs, teachers, you know, principals, whatever, the different areas along that line. I will not know the classification of students, but you can, you can infer that from what you're reading.
Yeah, well, if I think we're, if we're done building, I'm not sure I would even want the data made available down to the, the role of the teacher. Because that could infer, they could call an individual out and I'm not interested in that. I, I, again, a segmentation is sufficient and even a couple of buckets is fine. I think, um, you know, intuitively that can be.
Okay. These are not dropdown menus.
No, I understand.
So you're, you're asking me to take two hundred and fifty-one narratives and try to break this?
I would actually only be interested in the current hundred and twelve, but I mean, we can, if it's possible, yeah. Okay, well, I, yeah, I, I mean, we need some sort of clarity because this, honestly, this doesn't really give us a whole lot of, other than an alarm, potentially alarming trend. We, there's really nothing here for me to infer. And I want to make sure the conversations that we're having with the community and, and everybody that's talking about this, they're grounded in reality of what's really going on. Not to belittle the situation, but a hundred and twelve hangnails is significantly different than a hundred and twelve student engagement situations or whatever we call them, so. Any other, uh, conversations or items? Well, thank you. I think this was a healthy work session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, on our agenda is a work session to discuss the full year twenty-five preliminary budget. And we will start off by hearing from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, and Stacy Solvane, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
All right. Thank you, Chair Miller and members of the board. Before we get into the presentation, I want to set the stage a little bit. First of all, the theme of our budgeting over the last couple of years has been cautious optimism. Um, I believe the initial budget proposal we're presenting tonight shows the benefits of that approach. There are many districts in Minnesota who are facing dire financial challenges. But we're making measured steps to ensure continued stability. Um, I think it is due to the planning of this board, um, to be very strategic, um, in your budget approach. Um, on February eighth, uh, you heard input, uh, about the input we received from constituents and provided your guidance in terms of balancing budget adjustments with spending down, um, the fund balance in order to maintain programs and staffing. The recommendation we'll present tonight reflects that direction from the board and community input. We took a values and priorities based approach to creating this proposed budget. Um, I really think this budget and the process reflects our values of cultural proficiency, a commitment to adapt education to meet the needs of, of students. And it also values our inclusive partnership, that our constituents are reflected in the decisions that shape our district. So we'll go through some major considerations in more detail. Um, I do want to address one other thing, which is not news to this board. But again, that we are losing eight point five million dollars in federal pandemic aid next year. This was funding to help us respond to and recover from the pandemic. Even today, I had a parent asking me, can you use ESER funds to help with the budget? So I really want to, uh, share that again. We knew this was going to go away, so we made two commitments. That we were going to use, uh, every penny for the benefit of students, families and staff. Um, whether it was the free summer programming, improvements to school facilities, health-related additions and supplies, new teaching and support positions to lower class sizes and provide additional student services. We saw the needs and we wanted to make sure we weren't going to have to turn back any of that funding if we had needs. And second, as I shared earlier, you, the board, and we thought about the long term right from the beginning. We knew it was going away and we wanted to be sure that when it did, we didn't face a financial cliff and end up having to cut deeply. Um, we did that too, as this proposed budget preserves more than one point six million of positions previously funded by ESER that I am now, uh, proposing that we use, uh, funding, um, fund them in a different way. You will see, uh, we have adjusted our cost increases, um, and that we still need to make some reductions, which many, uh, which reflect our enrollment. But I think we're in a good financial situation to address our challenges. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy Solvane and we'll go through the initial presentation.
Good evening again. A lot of the slides on the front end of the presentation should be familiar to you. We reviewed these last time. I'm not going to take a lot of time to them unless you have a question. Again, just looking at the agenda as we're moving forward, uh, we are into the March where we're presenting our initial budget recommendations to you. Following, uh, after tonight, in April and in May, we'll be going out to the community, to our staff members, and then bringing you back another report on the feedback that we've received on these recommendations. You do have to approve a budget by June thirtieth of the fiscal year for the following fiscal year. You'll have a workshop in June and then the opportunity to approve it, uh, at a later date in June as well. Again, our revenue is based upon the number of students in which we serve. It's pretty straightforward in that sense. Eighty percent of all of our expenses are related to people, one way or the other. The other twenty percent is made up on the transportation utilities, technology and such. Restricted revenue, here's a sample of a few of those items, including our tech levy, Title I, long-term facility maintenance. But also you could break that down into other areas as, as well as special education and such. As, uh, Dr. Battle has mentioned, uh, eight and a half million dollars of COVID relief funds will be ending. We will use up, um, all of those where, our goal is to use up all of those by the end of this fiscal year. The date that they actually expire is in September of FY twenty-four. We don't want to cross books. We're going to try to use this all up as we can right now. Cross books, fiscal year books. Uh, enrollment projections, you can see the seven-year trend, uh, month over month as to what our enrollment has looked like. Uh, we are projecting seven thousand students, uh, K-12 for next year. This again, revenue is based on students. We're losing, we're anticipating we'll lose another two hundred, two hundred and fifty students. That will impact our revenue, close to two, two and a half million dollars. You've seen the, uh, rate of inflation, uh, pacing, uh, the, the revenue that we receive for education. Again, this is continuing to widen, especially as we fight inflation over the recent years. Revenue and expense changes, again, uh, not a new slide for you folks. Uh, we are receiving two percent more in the general aid. That's about a hundred and forty-three dollars per student or one million dollars total. About a million and a half probably new money for special ed with cross subsidy. An increase of about five hundred thousand for your tech levy and about five hundred thousand dollars in other designated areas. Support staff, different areas in which we're told to use it. Like increased expenses, again, you've seen this list. We did change it from the last time we came to you from nine percent for insurance to about eighteen and a half percent. So that's going from one point seven million to roughly three million dollars in increased costs for our medical insurance. We've been watching the, the trend line, uh, really comes down to the number of claims compared to the, uh, the amount of, um, that we're paying into this. It, it's still underwater. So we were hoping that the claims would drop off. They have not. Uh, strategies for our structurally sustainable budget, Dr. Battle has already mentioned that. Do want to point out for the public, we are maintaining class sizes. We are trying to maximize all of the different funding sources and be creative with those as we can. And we understand, as you have demonstrated with where we are today, the ebb and flow of revenue streams and expenses. Uh, as of February first, we received, uh, the number of different responses, both from our community and our principal feedback. As we go through our, uh, recommendations tonight, you'll see that a lot of these items, um, are being addressed in the recommendations in which we're bringing forward. Uh, the one board meeting that we had, uh, we kind of, uh, landed on a balanced approach of about two percent reduction spend down in our fund balance as well as, um, decreasing our budget. So budget cut, so a balance between the two over time. We've kind of reviewed that, reflecting what our, our projected class size averages will be. Uh, getting into what this looks like for right sizing. So for maintaining class sizes in the K-12, we'd be looking at reducing just under twenty-three FTEs, uh, about two point seven million dollars. For our EL, uh, needs, we would actually be looking at increasing the FTEs by four point six. Special education supervisor, we're doing restructuring within the special ed department. That would be a decrease of a point five FTE. And we're looking to, uh, add four FTEs for advanced learning specialists so that each elementary has an advanced learning specialist dedicated to the site, which will also help focus on our pathways program at each site, a dedicated, uh, individual for those. Strategic roadmap, um, adding thirty-four thousand dollars, uh, just as far as gathering information, uh, and surveying and trying to see where are we over time with, with our culture and, and our progress. Preliminary adjustments, you're going to see a lot of ads on this page. This is where we are taking things that were, um, possibly coded to ESER or other areas and we are now going to find other funding sources for those. Uh, so elementary level three, uh, EAs, we will be adding those in. Uh, math interventionists, we will be, uh, continuing with. Elementary classrooms for class size reduction, we're adding nine of the twenty-two. Will be actually coming back, but we'll be using compensatory to offset the cost for those. Okay? Finance project manager, um, we're reducing the position by a point five. So the next page shows how we were paying for that with a reduction of one point oh, but we're adding point five of that back. Cultural liaisons, we have two liaisons that work just outside of the enrollment center to provide support there as well as support for our translations, um, that we send out from Aaron's department. We are going to code them once the ESER funds goes away to community ed and, and Jason in his department will absorb them into their department, um, as continuing needs. School within a school, um, this is our out of school time programming. And so Jason and Allison and the middle school principals work together on maximizing our schedule to where we generate additional revenue because of our, our targeted time where the teachers are working with the students. because of our, our targeted time where the teachers are working with the students. Big formula, the better we do that, the more efficient we do that, the more money we generate, the more money we generate for school within a school can be redirected back to the middle schools. That's what we're doing here. Credit recovery, we'll go to ALC funding. Boys volleyball will be an ad for the high school. Student service account specialist, this was also used for ESER. This is finance that works directly with special ed out of their department. That will be now coded to third-party billing, and then also adding back a 0.5 cultural liaison that is being reduced. Here you can see all of the different positions being eliminated under ESER. As the total of that, I'm not going to read through each of these. Comprehensive all-in-one place list. Reductions, once it's all done and over with, between the reductions of ESER, right sizing, and then the add-backs with other coding, we are still looking at just under $2.4 million in reductions. Also, the, the next little bullet that I have there, since our revised budget, we have been going through and saying, okay, you know what? This position, we're going to code differently right now. We're going to take this out of our restricted funds. These were positions that were approved under ESER, we're going to move that. We were shifting money around, trying to clean everything up. We're, we're coming up with probably about $500,000. I didn't want to change the table from your revised budget, so it's like, wait, these tables don't match up. Just know that that's there, so you're actually going to start off next year with the budget about a half a million dollars better. So your reduction, so when I get to, when I get there, when I just get there. So when we had the conversation as a group, we were talking about a 16 and a half percent unassigned fund balance by the time this was done. That half a million dollars, we'll take that 16.14%, and get it closer to 16.5%. So with the spin-down, with the adjustments, and with the reductions, we're coming in with that target of about 2% reduction in our fund balance for next year for unassigned, between all of these things. So we will then open up again the, the online feedback survey, closing April 21st. We will, Erin and I have built a more consolidated Budget 101 that will be distributed to our staff members with the, the different building leads to kind of walk them through, how did we get here? What does this look like? What are we actually reducing? That information will be available for them as well, so that they can provide feedback with information. The same PowerPoint will be used with our community groups and family groups and, and to help them understand as well. You see a few of the different dates for the different groups. The community will be pushing that information out as well, but this will be the first time that some of these are acknowledged. There we are, thank you.
While everybody collects their box, I just go over a clarification. The, on the comparative summary, there's a couple of them in here, but what is the constant we're using for salary increases across our groups?
Well, our, our assumption is that we'll have a two and a half percent increase to the salary cells, each cell, okay, of a schedule. That does not take into account that a person typically will go from one step to the next step. So from step four to step five, which already has a built-in increase, on average anywhere between 1.5 to 2.5%. Some cells are even higher than that. So that 2.5% is on top of the step increase that they would receive.
Sure.
So those are the assumptions.
And we, we've presented this data a couple of different times now, and we've.
For over a year.
We've used the two and a half percent, right?
For over a year.
So for instance, we've never used a 0%, have we?
Our budgets have been built on the assumption that we are increasing our salary schedules by two and a half percent year on each step.
Any other questions or?
Awesome, thank you Chair Miller. Just a couple of clarifying questions on the preliminary request for staffing document. And this is more about the shift between the, the reductions in ESER going into the general fund. I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask the question anyway.
Hopefully I know the answer.
So we have the maintaining class sizes, K through 12, line item 1.1. And then under maximizing federal funding, item 4.2, BHS class size reduction. That's a one-time hit that we're taking?
Yeah, because we had additional positions that were even above our right sizing. We had additional positions. If I wasn't losing 200 some students next year, what you would see is our right sizing number would be quite small, and the hit would be just under the ESER piece, but we're getting kind of a double hit.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought it was. And then item 4.3, VA secondary. Can you elaborate on that, the reduction there?
Again, these are ESER-specific positions in which we dedicate. And again, we've held the two, and we just haven't been using the general funds on the other side to help support some of this stuff. So some of that will be offset now.
So, but it's not, there's not an offset in the add-back in the preliminary adjustments to the positive?
Right, because, because of the, the enrollment with that, I'm able to cover it.
Got it, got it. And then can you just, I think you might have covered this, forgive me, it's a little late. The cultural liaison shift, it's close, but it's not exact.
The one that was under ESER is what would be picked up, what we can afford with A&amp;I. And actually, it's a 0.5, but I think this is actually all going to end up being awash with what we have.
Got it, okay. Let me just look to make sure I don't have any other questions. I think that was it. Yeah, and as you pointed out Stacy, just a comment, I appreciated that, you know, Dr. Battle, you pointed this out as well, that clearly we, we stayed true to our strategic directions, you know, moving, and what we had talked about originally. Let's make sure that everything's coded properly to ESER. We're being clean about shifting everything back into the general fund, and also listening to what our staff and, and community are asking for. We, we definitely did that in terms of multilingual supports and, you know, the social, emotional, so, thank you.
And every year, as, as you folks are well aware, we, we, we adjust to our needs with the resources that we have available. So, you know, if we have continuing needs in certain areas over the next few years, we'll make adjustments, and we'll have to, to, to adapt to those as well.
That's all I have.
Any questions or comments? Yep, please.
So we spent earlier this evening, an hour and 15 minutes, talking about safe and healthy schools. Is there anything, I didn't see anything that, that jumped out at me as far as things that you and your team are needing to make our schools safer and healthier? So is that, did I, did I miss it? Is, or do you feel like you have the support and the resources you need now to keep moving in those directions?
So earlier I mentioned about the parent resource, so if you think of the green column, just, and I can, I don't want to give you a range, because I haven't fully reviewed all the options, but adding that component, and then also today, there was an update from the Minnesota Capitol, that the SRO.
I just saw that notification.
So I'm just waiting to see.
Wall signed the bill.
The city of Burnsville gets their clarification, and then that would be in the budget, too. Because I believe we still have one more year, so I have to look at the dates, so just.
We do.
More on that.
But would that be a budget item, or, I mean, we, we have FTE.
Right, yeah. It's a wash. That is one other component that I hope to put in the budget. Continuation of the contract for SROs.
Okay.
Dr. Belmont, can you think of anything else that we're hearing from sites in terms of resources?
I mean, there's been some identified capital-related pieces that we.
Oh, yeah.
Put into long-term visioning.
Yeah, so capital, that'll be coming, as you know, that comes later. Yeah, you're right, some security features.
And then I just have a comment after my question, which is, thank you. I think it's, you know, you watch the news, you know, we have our own, we certainly have a lot of challenges that we're working to address in the district, and it's reassuring that we're not having to address those challenges while simultaneously trying to solve a 20 or 30 or 40 million dollar budget problem, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I will say on that.
I hand that back to you folks with your guidance on that, yep.
Well, it's been a multi-year process to get us to this point, this day that we knew it was coming, so.
Questions or comments tonight? What do you need from us to talk about? I mean, we've wandered the timeline and everything, but just to be clear, you have what you need?
I think just when we gather all the feedback, when we come back and workshop, I think that's when we need the guidance. If we, I did hear from a little birdie, they were glad to hear the boys volleyball, because they were planning to be at a public meeting on the 16th.
I, I, I will.
So I think now that it's out, we'll, we'll hear, if I'm missing anything, or, and then we'll share it with you and Stacy.
We will start our initial planning and postings and, and movement based upon this recommendation, unless there's strong opposition against that, but we do want to kind of keep things moving forward.
Because it is hiring season, and we're always cognizant of that.
We, we've kind of held until we presented and sought your feedback first.
Yep. Especially as you know, because there are some reductions, and people want to know, and if they can get in other positions, we like to retain people.
I, I think the going wrong message here, though, and that's wrong, is the two main drivers of reductions are classroom, or just.
Right sizing.
Right sizing, yes. I hate that word, but that is what it is. And the ESER fund stoppage that we were facing.
You're, you're, you're maintaining class sizes, if you prefer that.
Yeah. And so if we weren't, if we didn't have our student decline, we entirely possibly would have pretty little cuts to make, is that a fair assumption?
Well, just even with the one year where we had the flat enrollment, it, it impacted significantly our, our, our financial state, so it helps.
Okay. All right. Next on our agenda, we're going to move to a closed session to discuss labor negotiation strategy, as permitted by State Statute 13D dot 03. Is there a motion to close the meeting at this time to, to discuss labor negotiation strategy?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Mercer. All those in the papers say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, the motion carries unanimously.